All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Hillsburg and the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Let the roll call show that all council members are present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There are none.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda's passed. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our November 6th, the regular meeting, and November 20th, special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Okay, we have no announcements and presentations, so we'll move on to council reports on matters of interest occurring since the previous regular meeting. Councilmember Gold, would you like to start it off?
Well, I was, had the privilege of being invited to a Posada Navidadña Saturday night, which was at the common room at the Foss Court Apartments. So it was very interesting. I've never seen that particular tradition, which is very widespread in Mexico, I understand. And it was also just a pleasure to be in that, that building and just, you know, feel happy that we were able to build that fine, you know, subsidized housing unit. And I'm just hopeful in the new year that we'll find some funds somewhere so that we can continue doing projects like that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayley?
Yeah, two things. I had on Wednesday, December 13th, I was in Novato for the N-C-R-A meeting. Nothing particularly, particularly relevant to the City of Hillsburg at this time, and I'll report out on that once there is. Then also, came back and then held a, we did a N-C-P-A Special Finance Committee meeting over the phone regarding bond refinancing and, and then at the commission meeting the following day, approved that. And right now, the projections are, the benefit to the city will be about nine grand for our shares, so it's not a big amount, but nine grand's nine grand. So it's, so that is moving forward and we'll hopefully have that done by the end of the year. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Nejukas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few activities. On December 7th, went to the Habitat for Humanity event, that was fun. Three hundred thousand dollars was raised. Last year they did forty thousand, this year three hundred thousand. There's some very intense excitement about, you know, doing good things for, for the restoration, for the fire restoration. Twelve seven, Transportation Committee, I think they're raring to go for some, for some projects next year. I met twelve on December 8th with David Hill regarding his kind of latest on the replay Mill Street, Mill District project. Twelve thirteen, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, also unpacked, actually it was a lot, a lot of, a lot of good stuff happening, especially the, the age-friendly community projects is really, is really ramping up. I'm expecting, I, I think we're gonna see some interesting things coming to the dais with that, with that initiative over the next few months. Met with Dustin Valet on the fourteenth about his latest on the Matheson Avenue parking lot, Hillsburg Avenue Parking Lot Properties. Met with Tim Norvet about, with Avalo regarding expanding ag tech opportunities and business initiatives in Hillsburg. And then finally, this, the most interesting was, of all things, Russian River Water Agency this morning. It's one of those, those kind of wonky organizations that it seems completely banal, but as a, as a mechanism for allowing government to work more effectively, it's, it's a pretty amazing, neat organization. And it's actually, the state of California's actually looking at the Russian River Watershed Agency as a model for how to regionalize and coordinate efforts with, with regard to managing water resources throughout the state. So it's kind of, it's actually pretty exciting and neat, and it's a, it's something that we should, as a, as a watershed, should be proud of. So I'm excited to get more involved with that. That's it. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Manziel?
Since the last meeting, we did all sit up here and connect with the Planning Commission, and I wanted to just put it on record that that joint meeting with the Planning Commission regarding our new design guidelines was really good for me to be part of. I really like interacting more with the Planning Commission, so I'm hoping in the new year that we have more joint meetings, because I feel that those bodies are really important to be talking with each other regarding development in our town. So that was good. Really good framing questions and really good audience input. On the eighth of December, I met with Ray Holly about the coverage of what happened with our vice mayor, mayor experience, and that was good. Check in with our town editor. He's always helpful to me to make me understand more about how things are heard and how I present myself. I did meet with Dustin Valet as well. I'm real curious about what's happening on Matheson with the, with the John Holt Building that recently sold. And I really appreciate Dustin Valet, I met with him twice regarding his project, and he seems to be real interested in talking directly to us and making sure that we understand what his project is about, and that's the one with Craig Ramsey. I also spoke with former council member Gary Plasse about his filming of me and others on the dais and had a nice phone call with him about his intentions and what he's gonna do with the film that he's making. I had a meeting with the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, which is always a long meeting, and we don't talk much, and I know I'm on a timer, but when we go to, when I go to these meetings, I know other people serve as directors on meeting, on, on Board of Directors on these different agencies. This agency is really an interesting agency, and I'm so glad to still have this. I hope tonight I get reappointed for next year. It's a really exciting, organized group of people, and there's boards of supervisor, or board of supervisor members, Rabbit and Goran and Zane. And anyway, we're dealing with a lot right now when it comes to the after the fire, but also exciting projects, lot of money being put into transportation and a lot of good information there. So I just really appreciate being at those meetings and I hope to continue to work with them. I went to the Hillsburg Farmers Market Party. What an amazing event up at the Alexander Valley Grange Hall. That was the thirteenth. And again, just really proud of our community's agricultural roots, and I really liked the Hillsburg Farmers Market, and I'm appreciative to be included in that, that gathering. I, I think it's a really great thing that we have such a strong group of people that wanna do the work they do every week in that season to create food for us and also just teach us about our land. On the fourteenth of December, I turned fifty-seven years of age. On the fifteenth, I, I also spoke again with the agent at 119 North Street, just regarding what's happening. I went to the Senior Center for Holiday Celebration on Saturday morning, and that was really fun, hanging out and eating latkes. Is it latkes? What is it? Latkes, latkes. And I also really appreciated being published in the Press Democrat on Sunday, if you didn't see it, regarding teacher unions and why we need to fund teachers now more than ever in the public schools. And I want to all call your attention to the S-STAT. I guess this is the proposal. What an exciting proposal. I haven't read it enough to say completely, but I just wanna make sure that everybody knows, this group of citizens that put this together is a really hopeful document, and I'm really looking forward to talking more about it. I hope we get selected by the AIA. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a few things. The Joint Planning Commission Council meeting, I thought, went really well. It was good to see the design considerations that we're looking at. I, I know there's a couple more meetings that we're gonna be having, a public one, then one with the Planning Commission alone, and then also with the council, so we have a little bit more time for input on that. On the seventh, I couldn't attend the Library Advisory Board meeting, but I read the minutes and the, the hours for Saturday are gonna be increased from ten AM to six PM on, in April, which is good. And then, I'm also part of a committee that is working on making the fountain a fountain again. So TBD. So that's, that's gonna be interesting. And then, on the thirteenth, I was at the Marin Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District meeting. Nothing really exciting to report there. I'm now the first vice president, so that's what they recommended me to do, and so I hope to be reappointed to that one as well. So, oh, and on the seventh also, I went to the Sewage Works and got a, got a tour, and my family wanted to do it, and so they wanted to, went out and, went out and see it, and Rob Skates out there gave a really good tour, and it wasn't that stinky. So that's all I have. So, moving on to City Manager Reports, we have an update on the Hillsburg Avenue Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mayor McCaffrey, councilmembers. So we have representatives from GHD and our staff, which will give a brief update on the status of the Hillsburg Avenue Improvement Project.
There it is. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and happy birthday. Thank you for having me to do a brief update on the roundabout. This is a rendering of what it's supposed to look like when it's done, and it's gonna be pretty close to that, which is pretty good. The next slide talks about where we stand with all the underground utilities, starting off with the sewer. All the pipes have been installed, tested, and they passed, and we're operating under a gravity sewer since about two weeks ago, so that's a big milestone. They started that last January. And the remaining items of work will be the iron raising, which is raising the manhole lids to final grade when they pave, after they pave to make it all smooth. The water system, all the pipe is in the ground, essentially in the ground. Remaining items of work, we're gonna start pressure testing, disinfection, and we're hoping for a tie-in in late January. There's gonna be three tie-in locations and one capping location. Three tie-in locations will be up at where the New Forest currently is, over by Spoke Folk, and in front of Shafitz, and the cap will be in front of Exchange Bank. So that actually went really well. And then, last item is the storm drain system. So that, we put in several little pieces of the storm drain system, and then all the pipes have been installed. We're going to be TVing them later this week, and then the top boxes will be set to grade when all the flatwork is being done, curb, gutter, and sidewalk. So that, we're about done with that, too. And then the upcoming work in the future, we'll be working on the bio-retention areas, which include in front of Parish, on the north side of Parish, around Exchange Bank, and opposite Exchange Bank towards the Chamber Building this next month. And then, on the New Forest side, it'll probably be late, late next month or early February. The concrete flatwork, I hope to be starting about the first of the year, and that'll be starting in front of Elephant in the Room, or the old Flow Brewery, or beer tasting place, and around Parish where the Plaza's going to be. And then we're gonna be working our way around, oh, and the next spot will be around the Chamber Building. Then the paving comes, which will be a big deal. It'll be pretty disruptive, but just because we're narrowing the road down and it's a big operation, we've been talking with the business owners consistently. They're experiencing, as you probably all know, some hardship, and, but we're trying to work with them and trying to, everybody get things done at the same time. And then the other ongoing efforts will be the landscaping, and that will be kinda coming and going right now as the flatwork gets finished, and then they'll be installing the irrigation and then start putting in the plants and the material for the plants. But this is all conditioned on the weather, so could be pushing it out later each month as we go. So that's my update, and do you have any questions?
Any questions from council? Councilmember Gold?
Could you just explain bio-retention basins? So those are places where water will actually be allowed to mount up and absorb slowly?
Yes. It's a requirement by the Regional Board, and so what happens is the storm drain system, catch basins, have outlets that go into this gravel material, and it ponds in there and slowly absorbs into the groundwater. So it helps replenish the groundwater system. And then when they fill up, then it goes through the normal process of going down into Foss Creek.
Oh, okay, so there, it's sort of below the grade of the outlet, then?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
You really don't see these, so it's just big gravel. We actually just installed one instead of in front of Elephant in the Room, so you can see the gravel.
Thank you.
Sure. Can you just walk us through real quick, a little bit more detail on the paving? You said it's gonna be pretty disruptive, so I'm assuming one lane closed at a time. How long is it gonna take? Kind of, kind of give us an idea of what we expect?
Well, so we're taking out all the way down to the subgrade, which is basically down to the dirt. And so then, we'll be doing one later in time, shifting traffic, we're working with the contractor on dealing with shifting the traffic, so we take out one lane for a certain distance, put in the aggregate base, and then put in a, a lift, a pavement, not the final lift, and so then we can do that around the, roundabout in little sections. And then at the last, we'll do, be doing the final paving, which will be like the top two inches, and we'll, that'll go very quickly, and that will take just dump trucks and just keep going, and, and so that should be less disruptive, but it's still an ongoing operation. We don't like traffic on new pavement until they put the breakdown roller on it.
So is that done, are you gonna be doing some of this at night, or is this all during the day?
Hopefully during the day.
Any questions? Joe?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, a few things. First of all, I, I think it's really, looking at the way that you presented the information, you know, the, the multi-layers, you know, the sewer, the water, the storm drain, I think that reinforces the complexity, it's not, it's not just the roundabout, there's a lot of stuff that's happening.
Yes, most of this job is below grade.
Right, right. And, and so the, all the below grade, all the, the deep underground is done?
The deep underground sewer is done.
Right.
Which is a big milestone.
So, yeah, so it is a big, it is a big milestone. I, I would, you know, to me, it's, this is, this is a, might be useful to the community just for us to say, look, we're, we're kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, or turning a corner.
I don't wanna jinx anything.
Yeah. Well, the weather is a big variable.
Yeah, big variable, yes.
Right.
And so they worked on the sewer from January till about December, so that was a big undertaking for them.
Right, right. So, the, the hub, are we, are you done with the hub?
No, that falls into the paving plan and stuff, and that will actually be done probably at the last, because of transferring traffic. You can move a lot of traffic back and forth through the hub.
Right. I'm sorry, what I meant was, to what extent are you finished, like, is there, are you gonna be doing anything with the hub until that paving? I mean, what, is it, is it gonna be pretty much stationary, static? It, it is what it is, leave it there for a while, or?
No, the roundabout, you're talking about the, yeah, that's-
The actual middle of the hub?
Yeah, it's gonna actually kind of rotate and shrink in size.
Okay.
Like you see tonight, they've actually have it moved over a little bit to work on the water line.
I see, I see.
So it allows a lot more work area and traffic flow.
I, I just, sometimes I, going through there, I think, gosh, if we could just kind of quiet that down for a bit.
We all do, and especially all the merchants.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah. And then, as far as the, maybe you don't, this, I know that, that, that we don't have any firm landscaping, and it was kind of de-scope from the original product, but I, I would like to understand the, what, where we are as far as planning for the middle, beautifying the middle of the, of the, of that hub, once we finally get it all done. If there are any ideas of, has there been any further discussion about going beyond just simple landscaping, and maybe talking about a public art installation there? Has there been any sort of, you know, where are we with that?
We have revised landscape plans. We're reviewing those now. That the center of the roundabout really hasn't changed that much from what the original proposal was, original scope was. One issue with roundabouts is that you can't put any objects in the roundabout that are over about three and a half feet tall, because you need to see across the roundabout, and that would interrupt your, your sight. So, other than, than landscape materials and low walls, that's pretty much what you get in, in a roundabout, in the center of a roundabout.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I would like to, you know, I'm, I'm sure there'll be an ongoing conversation, but I would love to see something there, right? I mean, maybe, and maybe we'll have further conversations about some of that.
Joe, I think there's been some discussion of some public art perhaps next to the chamber, and that piece of, piece of little excess land there between the Chamber Building and the roundabout, so that's probably the most likely location.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's, I'd like to see that conversation keep ongoing, yes. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Manziel?
Yes, I just wanna thank you for coming and for giving a visual presentation, because I really need more connection with this, you know, the engineers. I really want more time with you all. I want you to come, and every month in 2018, I would love a report. I, I think it's a really important thing right now, because as we get closer to inconveniencing people and creating more issues, because that's what has to happen, I think it's really important to be explicit and transparent about what the process is. So this really helps me, and really thank you for coming and for giving us. I want more reports like this. I would, I would like to see you, like I said, once a month. Can we expect in the future, some work with, okay, so you, we're slowing down, if you go back to the image of the original roundabout first page, so are we gonna, when you start paving, I'm just wondering about this median, is that gonna start appearing in a different way, or is that the very last thing we do is create that structure of a median?
Are you talking between the road?
I'm looking mainly when I'm coming by the New Forest Project on my right. I'm just wondering, that piece right there, that piece ends where? Like, where's the circular driveway of the Garden Inn? How does that look there? Like, where, where does it start where we start slowing down the traffic? I never can get this in my head right. Like, where is that? Where that median starts up?
Well, if you drop down, you can see the Flow Building.
Okay.
You see the blue area? That's the open channel portion that you really can't see too well from the road, but the next, if you go to your right a little bit, that's the Elephant in the Room or Flow Building. And so if you go straight, straight across from that, that's where the median starts, at that old wood bridge.
And the medians are the last thing put in?
Yes, we think the contractor's planning to put those in the last.
Okay. And so the deep underground is done, we're hoping for you to come back once a month, and we're not sure about the, in the middle of the hub, if you will. All right, I think I had one other question, and I can't remember what it is, but I'm really happy to see you, and I love seeing people that were helping, I mean, that are helping us to understand more, because this project, as you well know, has gone over time, and we're just making sure that we all know and we can help our populace to understand what it looks like. So thanks for coming tonight.
Sure.
Helping us out.
Anytime.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation and look forward to getting more of them. Thanks. Yeah, when's the projected completion time?
Your contract ends what date?
My contract, I believe, ends in June. The contractor's end date is, the latest update is in August.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item five, public comments on non-agenda items. It's time to set aside to hear publics from the, hear comments from the public regarding matters of general interest that are not on the agenda but related to city council business. Pursuant to the Brown Act, however, the council cannot consider any issues or take any action requested during this comment period, and please limit your comments to three minutes maximum so that everybody has a chance to speak. And if there's something you'd like to talk about that's on the consent calendar, please let us know, and we'll consider pulling that. Welcome, Tim.
Never know, I was in high tech, right, Joe? Yeah, all right. I'm not here to criticize or malign Ray Holly. His recent actions likely have already caused this to happen. This is not an overreaction or a conspiracy theory. This is about, this is not about civility, kumbaya, where we all need to get along. This, some think, was way out of bounds, and you city council and city manager need to hold up the mirror, and there needs to be accountability and answers as to why you and all those behind the curtain who oversee and direct the culture at City Hall have enabled some people in the public eye to possibly think such behavior is okay when it's not. By the way, all of you are friends on Ray Holly's Facebook page, and those optics don't look good. Will you be accountable, or will you ignore it, or explain it away, or hire a consultant? This took place on your watch. As always, I'm here to offer opinion and ask questions. Two weeks ago, after the last city council meeting, friends contacted me and insisted that I look at Ray Holly's Facebook page. I told them I can't, we aren't Facebook friends. They said it's public, as signified by the small globe next to the timestamp of his post, which means anyone can access it, so there's no violation of his privacy. He even links his newspaper there. Some will come to Mr. Holly's defense, saying it was a bad attempt at humor. Mr. Holly can't un-ring this bell. No apology or falling on one sword will suffice, even after this image was pulled down by Facebook or after someone likely advised him to do so, because it could be viewed as inflammatory or possibly hate speech. By the way, Twitter today just instituted new policy to pull such posts. Mr. Holly's post remains in the ether, people in town have screenshots on their image to forward and share as they see fit. I fear many people, when they see Mr. Holly in the street, are now gonna see in their mind's eye the Facebook image I'm about to share with you. By the way, Mr. Holly has 1,220 Facebook friends. He got 59 actions in, in the form of likes, comments, and shares, so 59 actions times an average of 330 Facebook friends per user, per Facebook metrics, is roughly 20,000 recipients. And you're worried about bad press from the fires? Anyway, this is what our newspaper editor posted. He wrote, "After last night's city council meeting, I'm proposing a new rule." No big deal, right? Well, in my and others' opinions, it is a big deal. You see, these words were overshadowed by the stereotypical image of a woman of color with a scowl on her face, holding a baseball bat, with the words, "Talk shit, get hit," in large, bold-faced type. And this was underscored by, by Mr. Holly, saying, "After last night's city council meeting, I'm proposing a new rule." Remember, "talk shit, get hit." How dare someone in the public eye who arguably holds the public trust in the palm of their hand make what some think to be this, this racially insensitive, misogynistic, violent, threatening reference? This in a town that is 35% brown, where so many are working to help the Latina community to feel a part of and be comfortable in and trust Hillsburg? Yes, dare to have a difference of opinion, or raise a question, or make a comment that's not in line with the power base's agenda, and it suggests that you will be subjected to reprisal. That's what some believe our newspaper editor was advocating in his Facebook post, and through implication of that post, it's looking to suppress free speech and punish it. Just imagine this behavior and attitude in conjunction with a gun shop. Often, people in the public eye-
Tim, I think your, I think your time's up.
Thirty seconds, please. Often, people in the public eye sometimes lose their jobs or resign to public office for stepping out of bounds like this. Posts such as this typically either suppress or embolden action. Which side of that coin do you think we're on? Do you hear that applause? Nah, maybe they're afraid of reprisal. City council, please, look in the mirror, be accountable, this was not right. You need to step up, you can't hide on this one.
Thank you, Tim.
What's amazing to me is this room is not 35% brown.
Anybody else? Okay, seen none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to the consent count. Okay, seen none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Okay. Move on to item eight A, Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Public Access Improvement Design. Parks Director Themek.
Mayor members, council, Parks Superintendent Lycia will actually lead the presentation.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome, Hime.
How you doing? Good evening, councilmembers. I'll begin tonight's recommended action, I'll begin tonight's agenda by providing the staff's recommended action. Adopt the resolution approving a professional service agreement with Prunuski Chatham, Inc. in an amount of $149,830 to prepare regulatory compliance, design, and construction drawings for Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve, Open Space Preserve Access Improvements, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on the city's behalf, including amendments up to a 10% of the original agreement, and approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to allocate in addition of $54,000 from the Community Services Capital Fund for this project. At the November 20th, 2017 council meeting, the council approved the completed Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Management Plan, including the final mitigated negative declaration document, which is considered a secret document for the property, and executed the transfer of the Fitch Mountain to the city of Healdsburg. A component of approving the management plan was for the city of Healdsburg to provide access improvements to the preserve from the Villa Shannon Clear, which is considered the primary access point for the property. Therefore, staff reached out to Prunuski Chatham for regulatory compliance, design, and construction drawings. PCI has been the city's environmental consultant throughout the Fitch Mountain process, and are very familiar with the preserve and the city's long-term vision for this project. The proposal came in at around $149,830 for public access improvements. Funding for the public access improvements will be from the Community Services Capital Fund. Therefore, staff is requesting the council amend the fiscal year 2017-18 Community Services Capital, oh, excuse me, yeah, Community Services Fund, and allocate an additional $54,000 from the Community Service Capital Fund for this project. Public access improvements will include, actually, let me go to the next slide, and I'll use the cursor. Public access improvements will include parking lot and ADA improvements along the south end of the parking lot at the Villa Shannon Clear, the lower parking lot, include regreting, do some erosion control on existing trail, and then heading down to a trailhead, which will have an informational kiosk with interpretive signage and a gathering area. Oops, cursor's out of hand. And then doing some drainage work and grading this trail here, which will become the peliated woodpecker trail, and then going down along to a pedestrian footbridge, which will cross, you'll come across an existing creek, and then you'll find yourself into a Y, which directional signage to the fire road, which will be considered the Fitch Mountain Trail. The improvements will also include an ADA trail along, along the dog park, which will come to a picnic gathering area, and it'll circular, completely go circular around the dog park and back to the playground. So that's for the public access improvement, improvements for the preserve. And this is, this design was provided by PCI, and it was a conceptual schematic design. I will again provide staff's recommended action. Adopt the resolution approving a professional service agreement with Prunuski Chatham, Inc. in an amount of $149,830 to prepare regulatory compliance, design, and construction drawings for Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Access Improvements, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on the city's behalf, including amendments up to a 10% of the original agreement, and approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to allocate an additional $54,000 from the Community Services Capital Fund for this project. This concludes my presentation. And along with me tonight is Maggie Jensen, landscape architect for PCI, and she and I will address questions if the council has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Gold?
Yes, when I looked at this, my initial reaction was, how could it possibly cost $150,000 just to design improvements on existing trails? And when I looked through the document, I became even more, more mystified. So, for example, we have a senior civil engineer for 179 hours, that's four and a half weeks of full-time, and then there's an assistant engineer for 368 hours. So that's more than nine weeks of full-time employment. So between the two, what is, that's like 13 weeks of engineering just every day, day in and day out, for 40 hours a week. And similarly, for landscape architects, you've got senior architect, 280 hours, that's seven weeks full-time, and then a principal landscape architect for an additional 46 hours. So that's over eight weeks of full-time work for landscape architects. I just don't understand how this project is that complicated. Maybe you can tell me.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you. Hime, can you go back to the slide that showed the overview of the plan? A couple elements that are part of the project that Hime didn't mention are, there is an ADA compliant walkway that wraps around and connects the dog park to the playground, in addition to the installation of a permanent restroom structure that would be tied into the city sewer. The project is essentially being built into a hill slope, so we have topographical challenges. We're working with, or we will be working with the CDFW, California Department of Efficient Wildlife, in additional to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. There are certain submittal requirements for each phase. For this project, we've got five different submittals. There's no topographic survey done for this project, which means that, you know, we need to go in and survey the project area using a total station, getting the trees, any of the existing elements. So there is more than just a trail. There's also the slope above where Hime had mentioned the peliated woodpecker trail. There's drainage problems in that area. There's existing erosion, that would be addressed. So basically, we've got, just to kind of summarize, we've got a restroom, we've got a parking lot redesigned for that whole section of parking lot where the preserve entrance will be, paved walkways, trailhead, a retaining wall, which will need geotechnical and structural engineering. It's a six-foot retaining wall to accommodate that trailhead and gathering and interpretive area. There'll be a railing for public safety. So, you know, we have to follow specific guidelines to meet regulatory requirements, like California Building Code. The city of Healdsburg has their own specific requirements, as well as the environmental regulators that we're working with. So we need to do a full design for stormwater. So any impervious area that we introduce, which would be essentially required due to the ADA servicing on the trails, and the gathering area and the picnic area, all that can result in no net runoff. So you need to design for that stormwater management. It's kind of like what you were talking about with the roundabout. It's like, well, it's more than just a roundabout. You know, there's, there's a lot of stuff underneath that goes into that design that's required, and we have to fill out specific worksheets. The city of stormwater calculator is required by the city of Healdsburg. So there's a lot that does go into that. We did a construction cost estimate for this project, and it's coming in at about $1,00985. And so our design and regulatory compliance fees are approximately 15% of that, which is kind of an industry standard. We're a local company. We're in Sebastopol. We've been in business for over 30 years, and, you know, we're fairly competitive in our, in our field for this type of work. Let me just, so this will have to go through a public bidding process, and I'm working on a project right now, the Jenner Headlands Public Access Project, where we're opening up like 6,000 acres to the public. It's a pretty exciting project, and a lot of people say, well, it's just a parking lot. But it's really much more than that. There's interpretive areas, site furnishing, signage, drinking fountains, bike racks, and all of these items need to meet code. So there, you know, that, with all the different submittals, it really is quite an involved effort. And, you know, that, that project has been quite an effort, but really, there is a lot, I think, more involved and does meet the eye. I have a section that shows some, like a cross-section, so you could see maybe a little bit better some of the proposed improvements, like with the retaining wall and et cetera. But I think this is a really exciting project. It's a great platform for environmental education in the community and to really get people out, you know, onto the preserve. So as I mentioned, we need, you know, geographic survey, geotechnical engineering, structural engineering, hydraulics and hydrology for all the stormwater. So, and construction cost estimating as we go through, to make sure that, you know, we're meeting the city's targets for, you know, what they have planned to set aside for the project, and that doesn't go over. And then lastly, this project is going to go out to a public bid. And so what our plans aim to accomplish is that whoever bids this project is going to not surprise you with a change order, or, you know, that the city is essentially protected when they make an agreement with a contractor to do this work, that our drawings and specifications are really solid, and that you're going to get a project that reflects what everybody's expectations are, that match the plans for the, for the price that you, you know, award that bid to. So that's essentially what I have to say.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Mansell?
So, Mayor members, council, one of the things that I did is I did some additional research, and I was able to find in historical archives of the county in 2011, when the county awarded the contract for Healdsburg Ridge Design, that work was about $85,000. But a portion of the design work, so the preparation of all the actual construction documents and the permitting process, was handled by Regional Parks. So there was a contract for the planning part of it, but the actual construction documents and permitting were delivered by Regional Parks. They didn't have a cost estimate for that, so I'm assuming they just incorporated that into their ongoing workload. So in perspective, the complexities here, I think, are equal to, if not greater than what were available, or what were occurring at Healdsburg Ridge at the time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yeah, I had a question, just in terms of, I ask everybody this, so don't personalize this, but I do echo some of the concerns about hourly rates and a person like me who makes $40 an hour as a teacher. I'm just wondering, how does it work out for your company in terms of internships, or anything where you have young people or people learning the trade? Because the lowest wage is $110 an hour or so. So just curious about that, if you utilize interns at all, or people that learn as they...
Well, yeah, we do. As, you know, certain people come along, we might have a colleague or a client who said, you know, "My son's doing environmental education, you know, degree at Sonoma State. Can he come work with you for the summer?" And we do embrace that, but, you know, for this type of work that requires certain permits, you do need licensed professionals. So, but, yeah, to balance, we, you know, routinely have interns.
So this was not, this part of the project was not put through any kind of a bidding process? It was just awarded to this company?
Mayor members, council, that's correct, because of their experience with the site and their ongoing work with the city as it relates to Fitch Mountain.
Just a couple of questions. The letter was dated October 3rd, and the schedule shows you starting October 17th. So assuming this is approved, is the adjustment to the timeline just a couple months for completion?
Yeah, we could accelerate things to a degree, but I would imagine that the schedule, you know, would be set back. There's a chance for, let's see, where do we sit now? We're in mid-December, so we would have to make up like two to three months to get back on track for construction, start in 2018. It's, it's in the realm of possibility, but, you know, there could be a delay in that.
My second question relates to the construction portion. So you said the, just a rough, you're thinking the construction portion is going to be $1.9 million?
Oh, no. I said $985,000, so approximately $1 million. I'm sorry. No, no. And a large, we, the city has proposed a phasing effort, so in order to be, we would do all of the improvements in one package, so we wouldn't have to kind of re-mobilize the design effort, you know, rather than, okay, so if we start with just, say, using a porta potty and do the minimum ADA requirements at the trailhead with the, you know, interpretive area and the footbridge, and kind of do the stuff that's on the right-hand side of the plan as a Phase B, you know, that's, that's a possibility, but our, just to be efficient, we would do all of the improvements in one set and could annotate that set that says, you know, this part of the work, this part of the work, and this part of the work, that's for the next phase. So you could do the Phase A improvements for, you know, $300,000, and then the Phase B improvements for $600,000, depending on fundraising, et cetera.
Okay, so that leads to my last question to you, is the potential funding sources as we go into the next budget cycle and reviewing all these things? What, where are you seeing the, the funding for the construction portion? So after the drawings are done, where do you see that coming?
Good evening. We have identified a couple funding sources. We have discussions with the State Coastal Conservancy, informal discussions about grant funding similar to the management plan. In addition, we did reach out to the State of California Wildlife Conservation Board for another grant opportunity. However, these grants require that the SEQA document be complete, and the design construction drawings be complete before applying for the grants.
And what's the turn time? So if we do all this work, and we get the report, then now we can submit, what's the turn time to find out, oh, we've got the funds? Or are we having to fund it and then hopefully get reimbursed? What's the turn time after you submit a request for the grant?
So, Mayor members, council, so the Coastal Conservancy, they want you to be through your SEQA process and have your plan approved, and then you can actually go through their process. They meet quarterly, I believe, it is, and they do the awards at those meetings. The other grant I'm not as familiar with?
Wildlife Conservation.
The second grant's the Wildlife Conservation Board, and I'm not sure if they meet quarterly. I don't have that information. I do know that they, they approve similar projects for public access improvement, like ours, most of the time.
It can typically happen in like a few-month timeframe, depending on who you're going after for funding. For the Jenner Headlands project, which is similar in nature to this project, you know, they secured $750,000 between the Coastal Conservancy, just as an example of funds that can be available.
So due to the timing, and if this is all being done in August and finishing up in September, and then we're going out to bid and all that, really, we have until probably springtime, once, during the winter, there's not a lot of this work that would get done, correct?
It's all going to be dependent on the weather and how things play out.
Just trying to get an understanding of like the timing and what's coming down. Thank you.
Totally.
Mayor, if I can, I can add one thing. We talked about competitive bidding. Mark, can you give some background on how we got to hire them in the first place?
Oh, sure. It's a great question. So when we originally decided to move forward, when we need to move forward the management plan, we actually went out for proposals, so we, I think, interviewed four firms?
Yes, we interviewed four firms. Prunuski Chatham, Inc. was one of them, DUDAC, Volmar Natural Lands Consulting, and LC Associates Inquesta. And actually, the lowest bidder was PCI, and I think was the only bidder in Sonoma County for the same project.
I'm sorry, for which project?
For the Fitch Mountain Management Plan.
For this plan?
Yeah.
You guys did this plan as well, the overview?
Yeah, we did the management plan, which included... Yeah, we did the management plan, which included the conceptual design.
Councilmember, any of us?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Yes, a few questions. So I think, sort of in line with what Vice Mayor Manziel mentioned, we're inheriting this, the project, the property essentially from Landpass. And one of Landpass's mantras is, you know, people power parks, right? So there's, you know, there's, as an example, I know for sure in the Riddell Preserve just west, not, not that far from here, the trails are being built by volunteers.
Yes.
So to what extent can you design your plans to say, okay, here, this section of, of the trail can be a volunteer-driven activity?
Well, we have thought of that exact thing. And there are, so this is like, this is the main public access piece of the project where we're looking at parking, ADA compliance, you know, getting people out into the preserve safely. And as you enter the Greater Preserve, there are some smaller connector trails. We've got a trail called Riverview Trail that could certainly be implemented by volunteers. And perhaps even portions of what we're calling the Banana Slug Trail around here, which could be implemented by volunteers. I would say trails that are not in need of being ADA compliant or surfaced with, you know, paved material. There's a lot of opportunity for volunteers to engage in this project, keeping in mind that this is just a small piece of the preserve and that the Greater Preserve, there's, there's quite a bit of work to be done. And volunteers can certainly jump into that effort.
So you're basically saying that because of the ADA, the, the, the technical nature of what's required for the specifications, that you really need the professional to do it?
Yes. For a portion of it.
Great.
Yeah.
Then the next question is, and this kind of came up when we're talking about the 111 North Street, otherwise known as the Cherry Building. Are there aspects of the, of the plan that would, that you would maybe say that is, is more of along the lines of a Lexus kind of a design versus a Toyota kind of a design?
Like the Cadillac versus the Subaru or Subarus?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I think, I think staff should take that question. During the management planning process, we went through this and we talked in quite a bit of detail about how to ensure that we respect the natural resources on the property. So the design that's here meets the regulatory obligations of ADA compliance, addresses natural resource preservation, ensures that trails don't erode and things like that. Some of the things, and, and that's part of the reason why there's two phases to this. So things like restrooms. We currently have a porta potty at the site. We can certainly continue to function with a porta potty long-term, has advantages, has disadvantages. So when we look at the actual phasing, I think that's when the council can make decisions about what do you want to build there? Do you want to build the park completely in its entirety as it's envisioned in the management plan? Or would you rather do it in phases? Or are there some elements that you don't want to do at all? So I, I don't think that this is a Cadillac version. I think this is respectful of the conservation values of the property. It provides safe access and it provides those ADA and regulatory experiences for people who can't get on the mountain.
That was one of the challenging parts of this project was just that it's so steep that we wanted to provide an experience for the elderly, children, the disabled so they could have, you know, kind of that same feeling of being in the preserve but not needing to go hike on, you know, thirty percent gradient trails.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to the public for questions now or comments. So if you just hang back. Yes, please. And I'll, if there are questions that come up, I'll take them all and then we can address them at the end. Ted?
Very good. Ted Calvert, Healdsburg. Of course, Fitch Mountain is near and dear to my heart, flora and fauna. And because this is an amendment to the budget regarding Fitch Mountain Park and Preserve. And I look forward to seeing an amendment to remove the dog park and replace, relocate it elsewhere. There aren't too many open space preserves that has a dog park right next to it for the safety of the fauna and the flora. Other than that, I'm really looking forward to this thing being in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public comment on this item. I'm pretty sure that the dog park is going to remain as part of this as it's in the drawing and the fence is still existing, is that correct?
Mayor, Members of Council, that is correct.
Okay, so not quite there, Ted. So I, I just want to comment on this. I think that some of the concerns with the, the cost of this project, I think, were pretty well addressed. It is difficult terrain and, you know, if, if, as part of the Russian River Water Agency, you'll become more and more familiar with runoff and stormwater and kind of the leave-no-trace rules that are in place in the state of California. And this is something that falls into those categories. I know it, it sounds like a lot, but this is a kind of a big design that ultimately will be a place where somebody in a wheelchair or something or somebody in a walker can traverse these, these trails. And the trails that, you know, when they lead over the creek there and they kind of get up into the places where, you know, people can run to the top and things like that, that's where all the, you know, everybody's been going up there and removing the Scotch broom and improving the trails and things like that. But this is kind of the, the spot where everybody can enjoy it, no matter what their physical abilities are.
It's just a loop around the dog park though, right? I mean, loop around the dog park, it's really not that elaborate.
Right. But if you look at that loop around the dog park and, I don't know, if, when you're driving down from the villa, you take that little alley there and that area that's always paved, you know, it's always kind of repaved and shifted, you know, there's that whole geotechnical analysis of that, which leads directly to the rest of the park. And then as soon as you get past the dog park fence, the, the grade just starts to drop off. And you look at the, where that path is going and that's, that's part of that as well. That, I'm not a geologist, but I know that there's some issues up there with geology and that kind of stuff. And having all that designed and figured out as part of this plan, I think, is what is making it a little bit more technical than just a loop around the dog park. But if you have any other comments?
I'm sorry if I interrupted. I personally think that we should put this out to a competitive bid. With all respect to this consultant, I just find that this, these time estimates just seem overblown to me. And that's, obviously, I'm not an expert, that's my feeling. And I just would be sort of interested to see if, what other companies might consider bidding for this project.
Vice Mayor Manziel?
Yeah, my, my concern is that I haven't been paying attention enough about this because I walk this all the time and that steep grade that you're talking about, I can't imagine making it anything for someone with a walker or a wheelchair, anybody that has problems. It's pretty steep. So I don't know exactly what it means, except I could drive over Fountain Grove every day when I go to work and that's quite a steep place that's going through a lot of changes now. And we can get into the engineering of building on, on sides of, of hills, but what comes up for me is why are we trying to create something there that is that elaborate? I understand it's important for people to have access, but maybe this isn't where they're going to have access. So I guess I'm a little late to say, why are we making it so available to people that can't go down a steep? That's where I go. I mean, I've walked there with you, we go straight down. I mean, it's, it's what we do. So I'm not sure about that, but if we do go that direction, it's going to cost more money and I can see why it would cost money. And it wouldn't just be maybe a loop around the dog park because it is an engineering feat to be able to make that so people could feel safe. Because as it is now, I'm pretty able and I have a hard time with it, but I kind of like it and it's challenging. So, so I'm just concerned also always about spending money for planning something that still costs another million dollars after that to actually implement it. But my concern is that I don't want to, you know, disregard the work that Director Theemiggen, I know you've also put in time. I mean, and I just, I don't want to create any, like, okay, now I've changed my, you know, it's just, I have concerns about spending money on something that makes it something that it naturally isn't. And so I have a problem spending the money. But it sounds like you went to a competitive bid, you said. So you actually did put it out there a little bit in terms of not a competitive bid the way you do a PDF, but you actually did some kind, or whatever the acronym is where you guys put it out there. I don't know, but I'm just concerned about that. Is there, is there a chance of asking you more about that?
Absolutely, Mayor, Members of Council. We actually went through the RFP process for the management plan development. We haven't for the actual design and the construction documents, which is what the action is right now. So we did go through the RFP process for the actual management plan. And as Park Superintendent Lacya said, PCI was the lowest priced and we felt the most qualified given their experience working in Sonoma County and, and the area.
Follow-up, Director? I mean, one of the things that I guess I need to get familiarized before I okay this or go with it is, so one of the questions that came up from someone that really does know Fitch Mountain, Mr. Calvert, is, is, you know, we got a dog park there that seems like an anomaly to kind of, okay, a dog park at a preserve. But I guess my question is, are we trying to make this something that it isn't? And is it too expensive to make it what it is, what you, what the intention is, which is accessible to everybody and the expense of doing that? I mean, there's one thing to drain water down and to create ways for water to work itself out, but I'm just wondering about all these walkways that have to be navigated because they're so steep. I'm just wondering about that. And that's just, I have to say it because it's up. But I just wondered if we're making something out of this that it isn't? And, and, and what's the objective? And is it the public's interest to do this? Have you heard from people that want access to this that are in walkers and, and other navigational tools?
Mayor, Members of Council, very good question. First of all, this plan contemplates no changes to the existing dog park. We do, do know that there are issues there, there are ADA issues that are study identified, there are erosion issues, things like that that we need to address. And so that's part of the CIP actually right now to, to make improvements at the dog park. The other improvements that are proposed related to accessibility, that's a requirement that we have to do. If you've been to Healdsburg Ridge and you hike up, there's an accessible trail segment that offers an experience. It goes over to Fox Pond where there's an actual bridge that goes across the dam and that provides that experience for those people with disabilities. So we have an obligation to provide that. It was acknowledged that the rest of the mountain simply cannot be made accessible. So this provides an experience that would give someone in a wheelchair or someone who's handicapped the opportunity to experience the site.
So if I could add to what the Director mentioned is, because the city now owns this, we have an obligation to provide access to folks. The challenge we have is there's very limited spaces on the mountain where we can provide that access. When we purchased the, the property, when they opened space, purchased the property and gave it to the city, we always recognize that that would be the kind of the jumping off point for hikers, walkers and so forth and so on. So I think that, that the site itself is challenging and I think that's somewhat demonstrated by the cost of, of the, of the design, if you will. But I, I just want to be clear that we don't really have a choice with regards to accessibility. We have to provide accessibility because now we own that site. We have to, we're going to have the same conversation eventually when we talk about the ridge, if and when Parkland Farms Boulevard ever punches through because we're going to have to provide parking there and we'll have to go through the same process with that. So not to, not to carry on, but I think it's, if nothing else, I think it's important to understand that we have an obligation to provide that access.
Councilmember Hagley?
Couple of comments. First, I appreciate Councilmember Gold's questions regarding the, you know, the hourly rates and the different levels, because I think that is important to understand that. And I appreciate your response because it does, you know, this is one thing that we've been working on from the NCPA standpoint is, you know, the Department of Redundancy Department, when you're dealing with government, where you're having to do multiple submittals for basically the same thing, has to be precise. So I, I appreciate the explanation, that makes sense. When I'm looking at this and accessibility and things like that, when we did, there was a group hike that we did with Landpass before this first came to us, when I first got on council. And I brought my kids with me and we were, I, I don't know where it was, but we were on the Banana Slug Trail, we went behind there. And it was, we were stepping over branches and Jackson literally did a flip because he tripped. And so when I look at something like this, I'm looking at, this is their, going for the long-term, you know, for the future. And it's something that, you know, even if it's just a loop around the dog park or, you know, just walking down, the whole point is to make the mountain a little bit more accessible for everybody. Not everybody can hike to the top, but you do get that experience even just doing that loop. And I could see going there with the kids. And this is something that I think is a, from a long-term perspective, this is almost like an infrastructure project. You, you do it, you do it right the first time, you get it done. And this is something that's there for, you know, like with the roundabout, the infrastructure underneath. We don't want to dig up the roundabout again for another hundred years, let's do it right the first time. So my personal opinion, I, I'm comfortable with the reasoning as to how we got to the, the contractor and doing the, the plans. And in terms of timing, I want more, you know, I, I want to keep working on getting, you know, fine-tuning on, on how we're going to fund the construction because that's important. I don't want to go through this and then say, oh, we don't have the funding. To me, this is a priority to, to fund the improvements and get it done. So from my perspective, I'm happy to offer a resolution at this time. Mayor, if anybody else does have comments?
Sure, go ahead. Joe, did you have some comments?
Well, I, just some quick, brief comments. I think, you know, first of all, as far as funding is concerned, actually, I can say that, that there is a, a bond measure on the June ballot that could, if it passes, give, open up a, a chunk of money that for Russian River Watershed improvements like this. So there is, if that passes, that we do have, there's another funding source potentially. I mean, I guess, I, I think this kind of comes down to one of those, when, when I asked about the Lexus versus Toyota and the response was, was solid. I think that this is one of those, those areas where, you know, the staff spent, spent a lot of time thinking, okay, how are we going to provide a meaningful experience to people who don't, who can't access? And, yeah, you probably could have, maybe you could have done something that wasn't, that was a little bit simpler. But, but I, I see where you're going with, 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 you know, the, the quality of the experience and how that, how that could really kind of improve that interaction with the space. So, so, you know, so I, and I'm also sensitive to the, to the, to the cost. I'm looking at the, the comparison to the, to the Healdsburg Ridge project, which to me is, there are a lot of, it's pretty straightforward. And so it seems to me that this is actually pretty, but given, given the comparisons of the price, it almost seems like it's not, it's not out of line. So I think coming into it, I had the same sense of, of, you know, wow, this does seem dear. But I'm, I'm actually the, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling better about, about your explanations for the, for the, for the project. And so I'm, I think the only thing I, where I see, I'll just reiterate again that I think there's a whole lot of room for engaging the, the community as far as, you know, getting that, their hands dirty. And, you know, I, I love to see, you know, Healdsburg Open Space Corps, you know, or Healdsburg Wilderness Corps, let's say, which is an actual group that does, that who's, who's called on to build things or improve things. I think that we, I'd like to see as we go forward to, you know, working with Landpass and the community to get, to make sure that we do harness that energy. Because there is, there's tremendous energy that, that would love to participate. And I think that's where we could, where we could start to see some returns on, you know.
Just one more question. In your process, when you're working with a consultant like this that you have experience and, you know, good working relationship with, do you ever negotiate the, a bid and say, well, this seems, this amount, this line item seems excessive or this, you know? Does that part of your process, the way most business people do it?
So Mayor, Members of Council, it is. And particularly when it comes to scope of the project and making sure they understand the scope of the project and looking at the numbers and things like that, so yes.
And did you go through that process with this bid? And did you go through that process with this bid?
In looking at the scope with them and talking about the actual, you know, numbers in the project and how many hours, I think really what it comes down to is the technical challenges with the site. We could go and shovel in a trail, and it would look like it does now, or we can do it right and build it so it's sustainable long-term, and that's what this plan does.
I was going to say something, but Councilmember Heagley, if you want to continue with your previous train?
I'd like to offer a resolution approving a professional services agreement with, I think my glasses, Pronuski Chatham, Inc., in the amount of $149,830 to prepare regulatory compliance, design, and construction drawings for Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve access improvements, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on the city's behalf, including amendments up to 10% of the original agreement, and approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to allocate an additional $54,000 from the Community Services Capital Fund to this project.
I will second that. I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilwoman Gold?
No.
Councilwoman Heagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Neokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Okay, we'll move on to item, item 9A, under new business, an interim ordinance regarding the retail sale of firearms in the city. City Manager McAlion.
So actually, I'm going to have Director DeRosa provide this brief update, and then be able to answer any questions we can.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you today is a recommendation to adopt an urgency ordinance imposing a temporary 45-day moratorium on new retail gun shops in the city. I'm just going to give you a quick little background on what our zoning code currently says about these uses in the city, where they're currently allowed. We had a discussion, I believe, at the last session about CUPs, and so as you know from that, there are certain uses that are allowed by right, there are certain uses that are prohibited, and some that require special use permits. In terms of a gun shop in the city, they are permitted as of right in two districts, the CD and the CS, so that's downtown commercial and the service commercial district. And the other zoning district that encompasses our downtown includes the Plaza Retail. Some of the typical uses that you will find in the CD and the CS districts include things such as multiple-family housing, daycares, professional offices, and of course, you know, cocktail lounges and your typical specialty retail liquor sales, and also churches. And since most of us don't deal with zoning designations on a daily basis, this map is for your benefit to orient you to what are the, where are these two zoning districts primarily located? So you can essentially see, this black line here is our downtown business district, the lighter pink is the CD, downtown commercial district, and the darker pink is our CS district. So we have a Dry Creek Road here, just to orient you. So predominantly, we have a north and south of the Dry Creek Road along Hillsburg Avenue, and then our core downtown area has a mix of the two. So in terms of regulating firearms businesses, the really, the only limited regulations that are in place are no home sales are permitted, also a permit from the Chief of Police is required to carry a concealed weapon, and the discharge of weapons in the city is prohibited, currently by our ordinance. So what would the urgency ordinance do? It would implement a 45-day moratorium on the location of new gun retail shops in the city. It'd also allow time for staff to study the most appropriate location for gun shops, whether these regulations are appropriate, and present a series of comprehensive recommendations to the council for further discussion. And so I'm going to bring it back to the recommended action and also make myself available for any questions you have. And also, our city attorney, as you know, is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Councilmember Neokas?
Well, I think that one of the questions we have in front of us is what direction to give staff, right? We're not just going with a 45-day moratorium, correct? We're giving, asking, giving some?
I think that we're actually just talking about the moratorium, and the idea is, is that staff can come up with, can study it and come up with options, and then we give direction. So I think what we're doing tonight is actually kind of narrow in that staff has asked us to kind of press pause and say, give us some time to think about this, and then we'll come back with some options, and then we can have a full-throated discussion. I think we're talking about possibly the second meeting.
Right, so I think if council wishes to enact this urgency ordinance, we would probably come back the second meeting in January, it gives us time. Staff will then have a chance to evaluate this and the implications, if you will, but be able to provide some recommendations to council. At that point, council can provide additional direction to staff at that point. If it's the council's desire, we would then go to the Planning Commission and look at implementing whatever, similar to how we did marijuana, where we would take direction from council, take that information to Planning Commission. Planning Commission, they would go through their process, we'd come back to council to adopt the ordinance, have a first and second reading. So that would be the process, if council wishes to enact the urgency ordinance and allow staff to continue to evaluate this.
Is that your question?
It does. One further question, and that's really for the city attorney, what, is there any sort of, what kind of legal exposure do we, might we have by incurring a 45-day moratorium, anything?
I'd like to not give legal advice from the DICE. I will say that I have evaluated our legal exposure and considered that in working with staff and preparing the moratorium.
Okay. Thanks.
And I'll go a little bit further and say that there's a specific provision in the government code that contemplates exactly what staff is recommending here, which is, it allows, the provision in the government code under which we're, the staff is recommending enactment of this ordinance, contemplates a moratorium on certain land uses while the city considers what might be an appropriate zoning scheme. So this, what staff is doing here is specifically contemplated by the government code.
That's really what I was getting at. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have no further questions from, you have a question?
I just had a couple of questions. So right now, it looks like under the current land use regulations, there's really three things you can't, you can't sell guns from your home, you've got to get a permit from the Chief of Police, and you can't fire guns or discharge a weapon, and the city is prohibited. So that's it. So is there anything, if a gun shop opened, there's, are there any requirements about how the inventory is stored?
I think these are probably questions that are, would be, that staff would need to research to come back to us, to say, this is what we might recommend if we go forward, right? Like in a conditional use permit, right? Those kind of things would be covered under that. The only things that are, what are covered right now are what's listed right there.
Okay.
There's nothing else that's covered.
That is correct.
So at this point, I'd like to open up to the public, if anybody has any comments, questions, please come on up, come on up, welcome.
Mayor and Members of City Council, my name is Scott Gobaldon, and I'm actually the one that probably got all this thing going. When I went to the city and did the research before I secured the building, I contemplated on, is this a good spot or not? I looked around quite a bit for a building of this size, because it's not only, I mean, people think gun store, and it has a bad stigma from what keeps going around as far as gun stores, but I really believe that the stigma comes from lack of knowledge. And so this store slash education center, it's why the building is so big, it's 11,000 square feet, is going to be more of a laser training for law enforcement, it's going to be a training for home defense, it's going to be training for children, because kids nowadays have no clue about guns. And I think, and I think there's an issue with guns, because people have so much lack of knowledge, alls they know is guns are dangerous, guns are scary, but, you know, opening a gun shop, the guns in the glass case are no more dangerous than the jewelry in the jewelry store next door. They're not going to get up and shoot someone. It takes someone to use the gun. And again, the fear comes from lack of knowledge. I understand there's some concern about a toy store next door. I went into the toy store, and I was pleasantly surprised to see no toy guns in there. I am hugely opposed to toy guns of any kind, because it teaches kids the wrong idea of what guns should be used for. They're not toys, they are tools, and each gun has a purpose. And if you come to my class, I can teach you these purposes, but anyway. So that's what the store is about, and someone mentioned is the regulations. A gun store is regulated to death by the Department of Justice. I'll give you a simple example. For instance, guns cannot be seen from the storefront, you have to build a wall, and the guns have to be behind the wall, so they're not exposed from the street, in case someone looks in and says, oh, that's whatever. So there are so many regulations from the FFL licensing and the Department of Justice that all your questions will be answered when you look into those, into that. And when I considered this place, I came to the city three times and said, are there any regulations? Nope, alls you got to do is secure the building and bring us a business license. I'm like, that's it. So I go out to my truck, I sit there for a minute, I go back in, I said, are you sure I don't need a use permit before I secure this building? They said, no, bring me a lease and a business license, and you can do this. That's exactly what I did. And now it falls under this moratorium from doing this. So I'm a little confused on why, maybe someone can answer that question. Now, maybe. Maybe not.
I'll take your question, and I'll answer it after we've taken comments from all the public.
All right, so basically, that's what it is. It's not so much just, like I said, a gun store, it's more of educating people on firearms and the proper use of them, and a proper respect for them, instead of having such a fear for them. So that's what the purpose of what I was trying to do. And finding a location that's 11,000-square-foot building to do this is difficult, and there was no regulations against it, so I thought it was a perfect thing to do.
Thank you very much.
Bruce Abramson, Hillsburg. When I first heard about this, I said, why is this in the middle of the city, in a commercial district, next to a theater, toy store, lots of people? And I'm thinking here, you have people coming in and out of the store, if it's at that location, with all kinds of guns, and will they be semi-automatics? Will be, there'll be a lot of out-of-town people probably coming in and out. And I have a lot of concern about that in a downtown commercial area. I think an industrial zone might be more appropriate, and it may not make people feel so anxious and nervous about the sense of, you know, what is going to happen there. It's been brought out in your communication about the increase in potential issues, violence, or, it was mentioned here, gun thefts, smash-and-grab robberies, trafficking and straw buying frequently occurs around gun stores in other cities. So I think we need to know what other cities have experienced with this. But to me, this is a totally inappropriate place. I mean, if it's a permitted use, perhaps it can be re-permitted or used as a CUP for a different district, where you don't have everybody going by the store, and you have people walking in and out with various kinds of guns and ammunition. I think it's going to get a lot of people a little bit nervous and upset with that. I think the citizenry probably would not like that, but that's my general opinion.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public comment on this item. So I wanted to answer your question, and in some respects, I think that what we're talking about here is that our staff needs time to address all of the things that both of you just spoke about. You know, that's something that I think people on both sides of this have issues with this, and I think that it's, for me, you know, I understand that this is a right, and it's a fundamental right. But at the same time, I think that our staff and our city deserves the time, the 45 days, to consider what to do and come back to us with recommendations on, you know, how do we, how do we address this, zoning implications, things like that. And so that's how I feel about it, and I think that if we're able to do that, I think it's going to make it, it's going to make it better for everybody. So just thought I'd throw that out there, and, you know, this is something where if we do this, we would have at least another three meetings that we talk about this, right? So we'd come back, give direction, then maybe we'd come up with an ordinance, it would go to the Planning Commission, it would come back, we'd have a first and second reading, you know, if we made any changes. Or it would go back to another meeting, and we would just say, well, it's fine how it is, and then we'd have to go on. So I think there's a lot of opportunities here to discuss this in greater detail when the staff has had time to evaluate everything. So that's my thoughts.
I agree. I think this would be a highly controversial thing for the local people, that they'd have a lot to say about whether it's a good location for gun stores. So I think we should definitely give the staff some time to work on this issue.
I'm fine with giving staff time, and not so much about the specific location, but more of the questions I have, you know, like the gentleman mentioned about, you know, no guns are displayed in the storefront, so then the concerns are, okay, then what is displayed there? You know, is it going to be tinted windows with bars on the window? Just some of those things where if the, if the business is located in the appropriate districts like that's outlined now, what are we walking by? I don't, you know, for me personally, it's not an issue about selling guns or owning guns, but I think, you know, it might be along the design guideline issue more for me. And then the other two issues that just, you know, from a security standpoint, you know, the questions brought up about the, somebody mentioned smash-and-grab or something, how real is that? Is that an opinion? Is that fact? Does it really happen? But for something like that, I would look to our police chief for guidance, maybe our staff, work with the police chief to find out, okay, what can be done to secure the inventory, so that we can minimize that impact on the local community? And so I don't think, you know, really, to me, this is more a land use issue than a specifically just gun issue. And I think having a discussion, having staff kind of come back with recommendations, I think, is fine, and I'm comfortable with that. I don't particularly have an issue with the location specifically. I, you know, I don't feel, okay, it needs to be cleared out in the industrial area or something like that, so.
Councilmember Neokas?
Yes, I think, you know, look, the question before us is, do we have a 45-day moratorium or not? If it's just keeping it to that simple thing, I think it's, that simple question, I think it's clear that it's a touchy subject. I think there are really strong arguments on each side, and I appreciate the candor that you brought to the conversation. I think it's really healthy, and I think it's, I think it's useful to have that kind of perspective in a conversation with the community, so that we can start to understand each other and not just say, oh, well, you know, a flippant this or that. understand each other and not just say, oh, well, you know, a flippant this or that response, right? So I think it's healthy to have a conversation and I support having the moratorium so that we can have that deeper conversation about, about, about this use.
I should run it, so?
The conversation I think that needs to happen is when someone comes to our city and wants to do something, and I think the gentleman suggested that he was told a process, and now he feels that he wants to know what happened to his process. And so I think it would have been healthy for us to start with the question of what's the impetus for this? And, and I think you outlined it. You're the man who wanted to put, or wants to put a gun shop in town in a particular address that I believe, I think I know the address, but you never cited it. But if it's next to a toy store, I know exactly what you're talking about. I don't wanna feel anything tonight, I wanna think because this issue is loaded. And I, I, I really mean that. I mean, this is a really big issue for a lot of people in terms of, like you said, the educational point, you know? And I really appreciate your respectfulness and your willingness to talk to us on a level where we can understand what your, what your purpose is and you're interested in educating and creating a big enough space for training to take place. And you suggested that space would be good for that, or you need larger space. Um, so I just wanna make sure you know, this is not a simple issue and I don't think there's just two sides. I think that's Western thinking. It's always about you, pro and con. It's not that easy. It's not an us and them. It's not a one, two. It's really lots of different areas of what we think when we talk about land use and, and location, safeness and education and purpose. And so I really don't wanna be categorized as being for or against anything in this particular issue, Second Amendment rights, all that. I mean, there's certainly a lot more going on in this country than just a yay or nay vote on that. So I'm really happy that you came to us tonight and I wanna just say that I, I, I support the forty-five days only because I, I do need to get educated on it before I vote. But I don't wanna feel this, I wanna think, I wanna use my head, not my, not my emotion or my fear or whatever it would be about a toy store next to a gun store or vice versa, a gun store next to a toy store. And I just don't wanna simplify this too much tonight. I think it's complex and I think that it deserves time and respect. And I'd like your answer, I'd like an answer to your question at some point about what happened when you came and said that you were told to do these three things and now you feel when you come up to our podium, you don't understand what happened to your, to your process. And I think that's an important thing people talk about in our city and it's not anybody's fault here. It's just when you're told something by your city, your government, you need to feel like you're heard and that you are understood and that you have a process that you're working from. I think that's fair and I think it's really wonderful that you're here tonight to tell us about that. So we're gonna learn about that process and we're also gonna learn about what your need is and hopefully look at what we can do as a council, the five of us, to make a good judgment on how we see this, this question of putting um, a gun shop into our downtown district. But I really appreciate your question. I don't know if it's gonna be answered tonight, Mayor, but I think it's not about pointing fingers or even, you know, pointing anything at this point. Um, I think it's really about just understanding a process and being respectful of your need to get your question answered, which is what happened when you were told this, this and this and you did it. And then now it's like, we're starting a forty-five day period of a moratorium so we can process our own need for land use and, and location and safety and feeling like we're making a good judgment for our city. So thank you for coming. I respect the fact that you came here and you were such, you were so helpful and under, we understand your intention. And this particular project, as you know, is, is gonna take us a little time and I personally need the time and I appreciate you understanding that. I hope you can. I still want his question answered, what happened for his process. It may not happen tonight, but I think he did ask us to think about, wait, I was told this, 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 and now I'm confused that it's become this. So I think that's important to address.
Well, I, I think I can answer that. I mean, he followed the process exactly how you should. And um, I think that the, what the council here has is police power to be able to say, wait a minute, you know, we need to think about this a little bit more before we accept this or make this decision. And so that's what is before us tonight is a temporary moratorium just so that we have our staff has the ability to analyze it a little bit more and come back with, with some um, reasonable, um, a more reasonable and more detailed discussion on, on what's going on. So that's, that's what happened. So you did everything right.
I'd like to add too that it, it's important to point out that this has nothing to do with the individual applicant. What, what the city is doing here is exercising, as the mayor said, its police power and to consider this as a land use matter, as Councilmember Hagley said. So this really is unrelated to the individual applicant.
And I just wanna clear, make it clear that uh, I do look forward to the discussion and I know this will be a robust discussion. Um, and we've already heard some from community members and I look forward to hearing more of that, including some more of the technical aspects from you. Um, and i- in terms of what might work, suggestions and what other cities have done. And I think it is important to look at that and I do look forward to that discussion down the road.
If I could, excuse me, clarify just for the record about the question on the process. Um, cause when Mr. Gobaldon came in, we actually had no contact information from him. And then when we had actually determined that we were gonna be moving forward with the urgency ordinance, uh, there was no trail of an email or a, a phone number. And I had actually asked all my staff that had interacted with him. And so really, it wasn't until last week when this was already advertised that, you know, we actually got his contact information. So I did want, if we had had that, staff would have definitely let him know in advance.
Director DeRosa, so does our city require a licensing of a business? Do, do they have to demonstrate a lease agreement has been made?
No.
Okay.
No.
Someone like the, for an ordinance?
Yes, um, I will move that the city council of the city of Hillsburg establish an interim urgency ordinance, establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of new retail uses selling firearms.
I second that.
I have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes, the ordinance passes. So we will be, um, we have forty-five days, we will be discussing this within forty-five days. Keep posted for that discussion. Thank you. So now I'll move on to item nine B under new business, replacement of police departments' body worn cameras. And I believe Sergeant Castaneda is gonna take this one. Welcome.
Welcome Chief as well.
Members of the council, I just wanted to introduce Sergeant Castaneda, who's done a lot of work on this project. But I just wanted to say, uh, first of all, thank you to the city council for approving our body cameras uh, four years, almost four years ago. We were one of the, uh, the second city in Sonoma County to get them at all and the only city, I think, to give everybody them, including code enforcement, parking enforcement, everybody has one. And I appreciate your support of that program. So I'll turn it over to Sergeant Castaneda, who's done the, all the work on this project.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having us here. Thank you, first time here. We're gonna start with the staff recommendations. Um, we've reviewed two different options in order to continue forward with, with our body worn cameras. And we've determined that the new five-year agreement provides the best level of service and equipment for officers and, and the department as a whole. And I'm gonna explain that in a second. Uh, we've been, uh, we've realized that over the last couple of years, um, body worn cameras have become an industry standard for evidentiary video recording, but have also provided the department transparency and promoted professionalism. I can't tell you how many times the district attorney's constantly asking us for videos of contacts, incidents, arrests, felony cases, and many times, um, if they don't have it, uh, they're hesitant to even file cases. So we, we've always been at the forefront of that. We've tested multiple different cameras over the years, uh, looked at different services. And at this time right now, we have twenty-four field staff, which are police officers, parking enforcement, uh, who have their own body worn cameras. And, um, and so those have a life, shelf life of about two and a half years. And we've got to the point where even my body worn camera, when I'm working it, it goes dead after a couple hours and I'd hate to be in a critical incident and my camera not working. So that's what we're looking at going forward. Um, in twenty fourteen, we entered into an agreement with Axon Enterprises regarding the, the body worn camera. And it's not just the camera, they provided um, the docking mechanism, um, the ongoing service with maintaining cost and licenses, the storage data and uh, any of that service that included retention and, and so on for the purpose of providing later that evidence to the court. Uh, right now, we're looking at two agreements. We have the three-year agreement, which is, which is what we prior had. It was, it's only the data storage and licensing. Um, we're gonna required to get cameras and docking equipment and other services that will obviously increase the cost. The five years, a new agreement that it has been provided. And so this has, it's, it's called a total um, assurance plan. And it gives us equipment, which we need right now. It gives us supporting warranty. So it's gonna give us twenty-four cameras plus two additional ones, twenty-six cameras. Um, it's gonna give us the service, the warranty, and if one of our cameras breaks, there's a replacement there. Obviously, the cost of that is ninety-eight thousand. Over a five-year period, it's um, expanded over a five-year period. And it, it may seem like a lot, but I'm gonna explain a little bit more here in a minute. Uh, so we reviewed the two options and the service and we concluded that the five-year plan is, is better in, in service. A couple of reasons behind that would be that the totality of the service, if we were to stay with the three-year, uh, at the end of five years, if we're looking forward and replacing the cameras, the service, the, the docking, the storage, some of the licenses, licensing fees in addition to that would go over a hundred thousand, over a hundred and twenty. There would obviously be subsequent expenses with the three years. So the five year, as we look at it in a professional comparison, we've deemed that that's been the, the most appropriate or the, the better deal for us. Again, we thank your support. Uh, we believe that it's important for our staff to continuously use our cameras. It's become an indispensable tool when we're out on the field contacting staff and it records accurately what the contact is. If I'm on the field and I have a, a request from a citizen to review a contact from one of my officers, I'll go back and that's the first thing I pull up, the video. And I like knowing that my officers have that capability to record and then be able to document in their reports exactly what happened and be able to relay that to the courts. So like I said, right now, we're in the need of new cameras. We can't just replace the camera, the battery that are self-enclosed and we have to get the new cameras with the new docking and all the new licensing. So as you move forward and progress, the new cameras have additional features that interact with our uh, computer aiding dispatching. Where dispatcher can just simply um, identify a call as a felony call versus a misdemeanor versus an infraction and it'll retain that video for longer periods of time. Uh, whereas if we didn't have that, then staff would have to go and manually identify the recordings for longer periods of time. Our um, technical services officer would have to spend a lot more time generating those videos for, for the courts. And so we constantly get requests for those videos. And so we found that this program, this system alleviates issues with the IT system in general for the whole city and, and us, um, less time for staff in putting in information or providing those subsequent recordings that are requested through the courts. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Yes, a few questions. First of all, um, can you, you, you mentioned the hundred and twenty thousand over the spend, can you help to quantify that a little more?
Yes, so what happens is that right now, we're gonna need, we've had twenty-four cameras when we started. We've realized that the life, life shelf of those are two and a half years. Uh, so we've already had to replace a couple and we've had to get new docking equipment. So now we're gonna replace another eighteen to begin with, with new docking equipment. And in two and a half years from then, we're gonna have to, again, get all that again. Whereas the five-year provides cameras um, right now at the two and a half mark and then at the five-year mark. And then it provides also the warranty to additional cameras because we've had the ones that unfortunately break or just malfunction and then we have to get a new one. So this is a professional agreement that provides us with not just the cameras, the tools, equipment, the story. So the three-year, if we were to look at it in the five-year period, would increase or go above and beyond the cost of the, the five-year agreement.
Gotcha, okay. Um, thanks. And so, so the next question is kind of related to that. Have you investigated other vendors? What, what, how's this compared to other vendors?
Yes, the chief was extremely active about doing that and I'll let him answer that.
Yeah, this is the best product o- out there by far in terms of, of body cameras. And I would say virtually every police department that has body cameras is utilizes this specific technology because it's not just the camera they're providing, but it's also the storage. And so when the officer goes back into the station from the field, they take that camera and they plug it into a docking station. It takes that and stores it in the cloud. We can retrieve it instantly to review if there's some sort of critical incident, use of force, personnel complaint, or just for court purposes. So in terms of the different products that are out there, if we felt there was a better product, product out there, we'd be looking for that.
Okay.
But not in this case.
And if I may add, uh, they're also gonna be coming up with one for the cars. And that's what we're looking up in the future too, to have that recording, which we used to have, but it was a different system that just, um, technology just um, wasn't there anymore for us. So that's what we're looking at, providing more video for the courts. It's demanded by the communities and the, the courts really need that to move forward.
And the third question, last question. Um, in, in the, in the quote, there is a, a, an itemization, um, in the itemization of costs, um, specifically was the uh, there is a, an itemization of the basic evidence, evidence.com license versus the pro evidence.com license. And the pro is a three thousand dollar per year expense. What's the difference? What are you getting with that?
The licenses, some of the officers have just the ability to look at their own video. Supervisors will have ability, which now we have, ability to look at all the officers' videos. So they're restricted to just looking at their videos. Uh, we need different licenses agreements to look at, depending on the level, tier levels and, and the person who does the property and evidence, they need that licensing agreement to look at everybody's videos. So they have different costs and different things within the licensing agreements that increase those costs.
Okay, thanks.
So you're going in from the public, has any questions or comments on this one? Tim Rocken.
Thank you, Tim Unger. So with the evolution of hardware, you look at the cell phone industry and you see new phones coming out annually. This five-year license on the right-hand side, superior deal to the one on the left. You get three times replacement of hardware for a difference of about five K a year. And you're upgraded all the time and they know what they're dealing with. Plus, at the end of the, end of the fifth year, you get your third replacement of hardware and probably a renewal of a license agreement at that time. I'm sure there's firmware and all sorts of stuff going on with there. For me, sitting in the back, having bought tons of equipment like that, that's a no-brainer, this deal, this ninety-eight K deal.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If I may add, again, it may look like a lot, but you wouldn't believe how much it's helped us clear complaints that may come in from individuals that are just frivolous and speeds up the process and helps settle potential allegations of misconduct and things like that. So it's really, it's worth its money.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'll bring it back for discussion or action.
I'd like to offer a resolution unless someone has something else to say. So um, I would like to offer the resolution of the city council of the city of Hillsburg to approve a professional services agreement with Axon Enterprises for the replacement of body worn cameras, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and increasing appropriations by nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Second?
I have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to item nine C.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item nine C, twenty seventeen, eighteen, mid-year budget review. Assistant City Manager Ippoliti, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Heather Ippoliti, Assistant City Manager.
Heather Ippoliti, Assistant City Manager. Tonight, the staff's recommendation is to receive the report, to adopt a resolution increasing fiscal year 1718 budget appropriations, and to adopt a resolution rescinding Resolution 32-2017, reestablishing the list of authorized positions. Tonight, I'm going to give a very brief Government Finance 101, go over the general fund, how they ended for 1617, touch on the enterprise funds, how they ended for 1617, touch a brief presentation on the general fund for the current fiscal year with four months passed, and then discuss the proposed budget amendment and staff changes, and go for proposed adoption from there. Government Finance 101. I'm not going to go through all of this, but there are a couple key points I want to stress. Each fund in a government portfolio, I'll call, is very special. Each one has its own special requirements. That's why a lot of them are called special revenue funds. You've also got enterprise funds that have either Prop 26 or Prop 218 requirements that restrict how you can spend the money. Then you've got the impact fee funds that are also considered special revenue funds, where we're required to use that money within five years. And then we even have a bond proceed fund, also considered a special revenue fund, that requires that we spend that money quickly. So when you take, and then you've got the general fund that council has a lot more discretion with on how they spend that money. But if you were to look at those funds all combined and look at the difference between revenues and expenditures and make judgment on that, it can be very misleading. It's very important to look at each fund individually, look at its needs because each one has a special need. And so I'll leave my little Government Finance 101 to that discussion. Let's talk about fiscal year 1617. The fiscal year ended June 30th of 2017. While the audit's not quite complete, it's almost complete. I expect the financial statements coming to council, probably the second meeting in January. We've got revenue here. What I've done is I've compared it to last year, 1516, to 1617 actuals, as well as compared it a little bit to budget. The sales tax revenue, 99% of budget, but 23% more than last year. We get our projections from HDL, a sales tax consultant, and they're usually spot-on. 99% of budget, that's pretty good. Property tax, 106% of budget, just slightly down 1%, where I saw, I broke that down a little farther, got some information from the county. We saw a slight decrease in the unsecured property tax. Businesses are required to file what's called a 571L. It's your unsecured property tax. Could be equipment, could be computers, it's not property. But we did see a decrease in that a bit. And that could be just, we're starting to see businesses slowing down on their purchases. So the value of those, of that equipment is decreasing over time. Let's see. Let's look a little bit at the detail here. Let's touch on RDA residual receipts. 151% of budget, but down 44% from prior year. What I did was I contacted the county on that one, kind of going, what's going on? In 1516, we received $783,976 in corrections from the county going back to fiscal year 201112. 1112 was that first year of dissolution. And so I believe going forward, we're going to start seeing about 700, 750,000 a year because our expenses in the RDA are fairly stable at this point. The bonds are all refinanced. And the way this works is you've got your total tax increment, less any expenses approved by the state, that's our bond payments. And that remaining tax increment then gets distributed to the taxing agencies, where the city, of course, is one of those. That's what's called residual receipts. So again, I'm going to estimate that we're going to start seeing about 750,000 going forward. So our current budget is probably, is also 500,000 for 1718. It's probably up a little low, is my guess. TOT, 107% of budget, 10% more than last year. Franchise fees, that includes PG&E, Comcast, garbage, 7% more than last year. Business license, 2% more than last year. That's a good way to go. Intergovernmental, excuse me, intergovernmental revenues. That is, you've got the COPS grant that runs about $100,000, but then you've got any other, usually, public safety grants that get recorded to the intergovernmental. And in 1617, the fire department went out for a grant and for an exhaust system. So that's the large bump there. That's, that's the big stuff. Any questions before I go on to expenditures?
What's miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous includes, for instance, the admin fee from HTID, TOT return late fees, one-time reimbursement monies included in that. In 1617, included, it included also some reimbursements for some one-time monies that, for cost recovery, where we had paid some money to the attorneys for some of the blighted properties, and we got some of that money back.
Councilor Hagley?
The RDA residual receipts, the 750,000 kind of going forward, you said that was, we met earlier, was that for 15 years you're projecting out? How long does that, I can't remember?
We're going to continue to get residual receipts, probably, their bonds have about another 15 years left to go. And then, but, and keep in mind that residual receipts, it just won't be called residual receipts anymore, it'll be called property tax. So once the residual receipts go away, it just won't have that special line. It'll be lumped, summed into that property tax line. There won't be considered tax increment anymore. Any other further questions?
I have a question about property taxes because I went to Sonoma County Tax. I went to that office and talked to the gentleman that's in charge of it all, and I was really concerned because I thought we would be getting more property tax. All our house values have gone up. Why aren't we getting more money?
Ah, but your value, like to sell, may have gone up significantly, but because of Prop 13, the max you're assessed value can go up each year is only 2% unless the house is sold and then reassessed. And then if it is sold within a family, then it's still the max of 2%. So.
So, but just, I mean, I'm just personalizing. My house was $785,000 on Porton Lane 12 years ago. I'm now being assessed at $1.4 million. Is that because every year it's going up 2%?
Every year it's going up 2%. There's a maximum per Prop 13.
Question?
Can you elaborate on the, on two line items here, the fines and collections and the interest earned and rents received?
Sure. Fines and collections. Fines and collections are going to include like parking fees, speeding tickets, things like that. And we contract with a company to, that actually processes those tickets, and then they send us a monthly reimbursement. And so that's your fines and collections. And so I think as Kevin pointed out, or somebody pointed out earlier, we've got, we've got a younger contingency of officers right now, and so they're very ambitious. And I believe that what we're seeing here is probably a result of that ambition. I don't know how else to put it. And then interest earned. It has gone down. Interest earned throughout the city has not gone down, and rents are stable. So the difference there is interest. Interest throughout the city, as in across the funds, has not gone down, that's actually gone up. Because I've been paying attention to the investments and focusing on that and actually even decreasing the value in our checking account to make sure that there's more funds for investments to earn additional interest. But there's some, there was a change in allocation, and that's what that is, to how it, how it was allocated to the general fund versus the other funds. I have made it more equitable based on the overall balance and not just a investment balance. So it's an over, it's being allocated to the funds in a different way from last year. So the overall interest has gone up, just the allocation to the general fund has gone down.
Okay, thank you. If I could clarify on the, I'm not sure what the challenge we've had in the past is we haven't been enforcing debt parking seven days a week. So our ticketing has been less because we're enforcing seven days a week. Now that, that may contribute to some of that as well.
Any further questions on 2016-17 general fund revenue before I go on to expenditures?
Please continue.
Thank you. We've got overall wages and benefits have gone up a bit, 104% of budget, 7% up. That also includes the fire reserves as well as the amounts reimbursed from the fires, the strike team revenues. Other employee-related expenses include a couple of professional recruitments that occurred for some higher-level positions. Contracted services includes building permit revenue, which adjusts with activity. The government, excuse me, the government fees, no, the noticing. The noticing was up 150% of budget but down from last year. That is related to meeting frequency, that's the publishing in the newspaper. The bank fees increased. As I try to maximize the interest, reducing the balance in the checking account, our fees go up. But also what's included in those fees are the armored car rentals. The support of local organizations includes the FFA and fireworks. And let's see, ah, transfers out. I want to touch on that a bit. The transfers out includes 1.2 million to the capital replacement fund per the capital replacement, excuse me, the general fund reserve policy. And that's included in the 1617 number and 601,547 to debt service. And then you've got the difference in funds, I mean, by department. The city council, the actual expense exceeded the budget by 9,600 or 3%. Last year, this expense included some unexpected legal costs related to litigation. The amount exceeded the budget in the police department was related to overtime and contracted services. Fire exceeding the budget, that was related to the strike team reimbursements. And the personnel costs incurred by staff on a strike team are considered unbudgeted costs. The strike team labor totaled over 98,000. And then that transfers outnumber, I want to, I want to mention that again, the transfer to the capital replacement fund per the council adopted reserve policy of 1.2 because it's going to have an impact on this. And what I want to, what I want to show you is, in 1617, what it's showing is a negative change in fund balance. So it looks like we're running at a deficit. But if you take out the 1.2 million transfer to capital replacement, in reality, we're running in the black by a positive over 400,000. So operationally, we have a balanced budget to the good. So I want to make sure that that's clear. I also want to point out, at June 30th of 17, we ended with a total fund balance of about 8.1 million, unrestricted reserves of 1.1 million. But that reserve policy of 30% of expenditures is 3.8 with another 3.1 set aside for pension stabilization. So as of June 30th of 17, we had 6.9 million set aside in reserves.
Can I stop there for a moment? Because I think it's important for council to, in the public, to understand that, is if you take a look at our reserve policy, we changed two things a couple of years ago. One was, rather than have reserves be based on revenue, we changed it to be based on expenses. We also changed the reserves, I believe, from 20% to 30%. So if you take a look at that 3.8 number, that's significant. The other thing we did back then was we created this pension stabilization fund, and we superfunded it at that point. And that's why you see 3.1 million dollars. So really, what you're looking at is a reserve of about 60%. I don't know the exact math when you take a look at the pension stabilization fund and the reserve policy. That's a significant number when you consider you have a general fund expenses, I believe, I tried to write in the 12 million.
About 12-point million.
That's a, that's a significant number. So I think that's one of the things that staff is very cognizant of, and we're very proactive in trying to make sure that we are meeting all of our obligations, but we're also very conservative in how we're setting up those fund balances and those policies. Heather will speak to that a little in more depth as she gets into the enterprise funds and also into the proposals for next year. But I just wanted to stop there and talk to that a bit because it's significant. When you take a look at how much money is set aside, the millions of dollars which is set aside, and looking at our general fund, it is a significant number.
So please, my question is, are we going to do anything? And this is rhetorical, it's not going to answer tonight. Are we ever going to do anything about the issue of pensions in the city and be the people that actually take this on as far as looking at how we can? I mean, I know we're running in the, in the black and, you know, everything's good for Healdsburg, but there's some cities that haven't done so well with the debt that goes along with the, you know, keeping pensions funded. And, you know, I'm just curious if we ever are going to get on to that, where we're going to do something that might even be revolutionary in terms of understanding how we can make a difference in our city to look at pensions and stabilizing that system.
I would say that the pension stabilization fund is something that no other city in Sonoma County has.
Yeah, I know that.
You know, that's stabilizing our annual required contribution to get to fully funded. So that right there is revolutionary, and that's something that no one else has ever done.
Right.
And I would say that other municipalities and other organizations that aren't based on municipalities would be very, they would be in good shape if they were to do something like that. Like, that is the kind of thing that you want to do. I think that people could look at Healdsburg as a model for how we have addressed our pension issue just by looking at that line, right? So that guarantees, or not guaranteed, nothing guarantees, but what that does is that smoothes out our contributions and makes our budgets more stable going into the future. And, you know, that's something that we did about two years ago. And I think that exactly what you're saying is exactly what we're doing. So.
I would argue it's not doing what I'm saying, but I'm not being clear. So when we get to that conversation.
If I could add to that, I think what the vice mayor's talking about is what's happening, well, maybe she's not. I think that the challenge is at the state level. And so I think what you're seeing now is you're seeing a much more proactive approach, at least from the city managers group, going to the PERS board meetings and talking about these unfunded liabilities, talking about ways which we can take a look at reducing the impacts to these cities because, and I'll stop after this, but Healdsburg is in good shape, but it could also be argued that that's 3.1 million dollars, which we can't be using for other projects in the city. We couldn't be using for parks, we couldn't be using for these other things. So as proactive we're doing, as we are trying to protect our interests, really, what's hap, the biggest impact has to happen at the state. And I think Governor Brown, you know, this is his last year, I think he's talking about some improvements to that. But I do know that the city managers group, I know Sean McGwin from Santa Rosa, he's participating in that. And the city managers, I think we understand the challenges the most because we understand what the impacts, especially as these discount rates are being dropped potentially to 6%. The impacts that this will have to the cities will be significant, especially some cities in Sonoma County, which will maybe not be able to survive that burden. But so those are the conversations that have to happen at the state level. And we can talk more to that when John Bartel comes in March. And we can talk more to that when John Bartel comes in March.
And can I add too?
Yes.
There are a few cases winding their way up the court system in California that would address pensions. And the courts are being kind of slow to rule on them. So my bet is that decisions will come down in 2018. And so I actually think that we might see some activity around pensions in 2018.
And part of what I was suggesting is not anything about not paying people for what they told, were told to pay, get paid. I'm suggesting that that money, exactly, and I've talked to city manager about this three years ago when I joined the council. I talked to Zidrick about it a lot, Councilman Zidrick. And it had to do with keeping that money in our own town. I mean, we put it out to Wall Street. Basically, that money goes to a fund, just like Stirs does, my pension fund, and it, it goes out to bigger, because it's more safe, whatever. And I was talking about micro loans and doing something where we actually make our interest and we, we keep the money local. And I really like that philosophy because then you're, if we're so autonomous here, we have our own fire, our own waste treatment, our own, why can't we invest the very money that our tax dollars are going for into our own system? And I think Hillsburg is a good investment. So I just bring that up because I like getting outside of the box and not just going with, oh yeah, we'll bring Bartel in. And, you know, I know he's interesting, but I'm not being sarcastic, he is interesting, but I can't follow most of it. All I know is that's money that I'd like to stay in my county, especially after the fires and everything else. So I only bring it up because I think we're an investy, investment-worthy city. And I think I'd like to see that pension stabilization money being spent locally, and I think it's a good investment. And I think we could get the same percentage that Wall Street's giving us or whatever that company is that we pay big bucks to, to invest in outside places. So I bring that up because I have to. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Again, we're leaving June 30th of 17 with a reserve, including the pension stabilization fund of almost 7 million. So, and an unrestricted, unreserved fund balance of 1.1. So I'm going to quickly, very quickly touch on the water, wastewater and electric funds. The point I want to bring across for each one of these funds, I'm not going to go into detail, is they are meeting their council reserve policies as well. Plus, the water fund has had some, we've had some concerns with that. The reason we adopted the increased rates a couple of years ago, we were not meeting bond covenants. We are now doing that. And the bond covenants is not about a reserve, it's more about that ratio between revenue and operating expenses. We are meeting that bond coverage in 1617 and per budget will be meeting it in 1718. So again, water funds meeting its reserve as well as its bond coverage. Same with wastewater, wastewater has a 25% of rate revenue reserve policy. And it is meeting its reserves as well as its bond coverage. Electric fund, electric fund has a reserve policy of 7 million. It's doing the same thing, it's meeting the reserve policy as well as funding that pension stabilization while, just like all other funds that have staff associated with them. So I'm not going to go into detail with these funds, but I am saying they're doing fine. They are, they are serving their purpose and meeting their reserves. We'll touch on a little bit more on the community services fund. It is also, it, it's, it's, it's right now, well, at June 30th of 17, it's meeting its reserves. And it's also operationally covering its expenses. In 1718, the way it's budgeted right now, it is not meeting its reserves. But again, that is, can, can be contributed to the cap, transfer to capital. And there's a budget amendment that, that takes care of that. So 17, excuse me, at the end of 17, it was fully meeting its reserves and covering its operating expenditures. I'm going to do a quick review of 1718 as of October 31st. And October 31st, you think four months, we've got a lot of data. In reality, we don't. We don't get property tax or RDA residual receipts until late, no, late, excuse me, late December. So I have gotten nothing, even as of December 31st, to even talk to you about. And sales tax, it's always about three months behind. So in reality, I haven't gotten much of that at all. But I can tell you that at least as of October 31st, we got 25% of budget and we're down a pension sales tax. But again, it's, it's too, it's too early to be concerned, there's not enough data. Development permits, that's something that's, that's kind of interesting. 53% of budget, even though what, we're only 33% part of the year. And that one, that one tracks pretty well. So 53% of budget, 25% more than, more than last year. So that's one I'm going to be watching. So far, we're doing really good in that area. Let's see. TOT, as of October 31st, we were 4%. I think we've talked a little bit about how TOT was down in October. But for, as of October 31st, we're still 4% more than last year. And we have.
So can we stop you there? I just, it's come up a lot. So for October, our TOT, our TOT was down 11%. That had, we're assuming had a lot to do with the fires. But because the months prior to October were, were good, our year-to-date was, were up 4%. So down 4% for October, but year-to-date we're up 4, excuse me, down 11% for October, but year-to-date we're up 4%.
So. To the different departments and what kind of revenue they generate. So for example, if you've got development fees coming at that high, would we be, then want to fund our planning, building department in a different way? Because they are a generator of a revenue or, you know, do we have any associations like that, values that are in there embedded so that we can actually fund the departments that need it and also that are generating more?
Yes, yes and no, it's more about activity. For instance, the planning department, the planning department does a lot of stuff that doesn't generate any revenue. For instance, all, all, all use tonight's ordinance item. That, that, that's a planning department, you know, responsibility, yet that's not giving us any revenue whatsoever. So planning, planning and building doesn't, doesn't essentially pay for itself because of, there is some work. Building, on the other hand, building itself does, does get the permit revenue. And I believe probably about three months ago, we added a, a building inspector because of the work going on. And what we are also proposing tonight in the amendments is a public works inspector. Because what's really going on are those infrastructure projects, private and public, and, and we need some help. So it's, it's more about the activity. Hopefully you've got the revenue to support it, but it's really more about the activity.
So to add to that, another example would be the design guidelines. So there's not a revenue piece with that, but that took a significant amount of staff work from Maya and her team. But you don't see revenue source coming in to offset that.
All right. Intergovernmental, 23% was received last year, but this year, so far, nothing. And that's, that's more related to that, that COPS grant. That COPS grant comes in at crazy times throughout the year. You really can't go, okay, we should have received already a quarter of it at least, not necessarily. And then I want to touch on, on fines and collections. Turns out that we're, we're, it looks like we're 6% of budget, but 59% down from last year. I, I dove into the details in preparing for this presentation. Turns out that, that last year, at the beginning of the year, we had received some prior year revenue. So the bump in last year from July 1 to October 31st was, was the timing of revenue. So that's, that's your difference. The prior company for our collections in that area was not very good at giving us our revenue timely. And what that is, is the 1617 revenue piece of 11,000 includes some revenue that goes back actually to June 30th of 16. Governmental revenue is not on a, on a, a full accrual basis. We can only accept revenue through August 31st, you can't go all the way back. So if I receive, let's say, May revenue in September, I don't get to count it at June 30th. I have to report it in that, in that new fiscal year. It's just the way governmental modified accrual works. So that 11,000 includes actually some prior year revenue, I dug into the details. So any questions regarding general fund revenue as of October 31st, 2017?
Joe. Quick, so I noticed that this, the franchise fees for 2017, 18 and 2016, 17 were higher. It seems to me that, that franchise fees were, are, are, are fixed, how's that, how does it work?
Oh, they're not fixed, it's based on revenue.
On the revenue of the franchisees?
Correct, so it is not fixed by any means. It is based on their revenue. Yeah, so if their revenue goes up, our franchise fees go up.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Please proceed.
Thank you. All right. Little bit on expenditures. City attorney, down 62% from last year. I believe that more has to do with the timing of paying of the bills. And transfers out, 100%, we, I haven't done any debt-related transfers out this fiscal year yet. But last year, we had already completed the transfer from the general fund to the capital replacement fund of 1.2. So that's why you're seeing that. Overall, we're 29% of budget, 25% down from last fiscal year. But I'd say we're on target is what I would say. Before I go to the proposed budget amendments, do you have any questions?
I do, I'm just still kind of processing because I just got this letter from my accountant that said with all the new tax changes, here's what you need to do in the next two weeks. So let me ask you this, when you're talking about billing with our city attorney, what are you alluding to when you suggest that that may reflect something that has to do with the timing of the billing? Is it just, I know it's an October 31st and you're saying, but does that mean that there might be a considerable bill coming in from our city attorney still? Or I don't, I don't know what you're?
Maybe we haven't gotten a full four months included in this number. So October 31st is four months elapsed and we haven't gotten four months of bills. But because we, we, the city pays no taxes. And so that went, how we record our expenses, you know, whether it's by month, we're not on any kind of accrual. So there's no impact to us at all. So that's what that number of, of 81,000 might not include a full four, four months of expenses.
So the other thing to remember last year, although some of it was charged to other accounts, we had to, lost to a significant piece of litigation, which both have been resolved. So that may have something to do with it as well.
Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, what is being proposed is a new position. We talked a little bit about this earlier. There is currently only one full-time public works inspector authorized. Adding an additional inspector will allow staff to address an increased workload in the department related to public and private development. This will bring inspection staffing to about the 2009 level prior to the recession. In 2009, with the Great Recession, we had budgeted two public works inspectors. One retired, leaving one, and so that position has not been filled since 2009. And because of the recession, had not been asked. But we are now at, at the level that we really do need that position. Total annual costs are estimated about 123, that's salary, wages, full benefit costs, taxes as well. And it is paid for from the street drainage, water and wastewater funds. Budget amendments. What we're proposing is a transfer out of the general fund to the street maintenance fund in the amount of 136,697. That is equal to the electric in Lufy per an adopted council resolution that the electric fund pays the general fund. And we are proposing to transfer that to the street fund. In years prior, the electric fund would actually transfer some of that money to the street fund directly. But we realize, we found an old resolution and realized some of that wasn't the proper thing to do. So what we're now doing is we're trying to make that street fund whole. And also it, it talks about the impact that the electric fund has on the street fund. And so again, we're trying to make that street fund whole after those changes. The, we're also proposing to increase police overtime budget by 50,000 to put it more in line with actual expense. There's a increase in general fund revenue of 44,000 and an increase of general fund police expenditures of 44,000 to cover the local hazard mitigation plan, contracted services and related grant revenue, they'll offset. Also, staff is asking for 30,000 into the city manager's budget to conduct a community survey. A contracted service would be requested through that. And then a couple of months ago, a resolution was taken to council to purchase a fire department pumper. And a transfer from the public safety fund to the vehicle fund was omitted in that resolution. That's cleaning that up. Included in this year's budget, 1718, is a transfer from the wastewater and electric funds to the general capital replacement fund. That's to record the loan that council approved for the city hall project. That transfer was actually done in 1617. So I'm, I'm just trying to clean up that budget to make it more accurate. And then what we're also proposing is to unfund a transfer from the community services fund to the, to the community services capital fund for a project that's been placed on hold. And then community services is also requesting that a parks caretaker position, a parks caretaker one position be upgraded to a parks caretaker two. That one position is currently vacant. And we'd like to raise the minimum requirements of that position to the level of a two, two, based on the needs of the department. Overall, annual cost of that is an increase of about 16,000. So we've got about six months left in the budget and so we're asking for an additional eight. And then also included is the added public works inspector position. And again, that's funded from streets, drainage, water and the wastewater funds. After these proposed budget amendments, the total fund balance comes to 7,000, excuse me, 7, 7.5 million with an unrestricted, unreserved fund balance of 370,000. And you've still got that reserve policy and that pension stabilization fund of over 7 million. So that concludes staff's report.
Any other questions?
Joe? Two questions. First of all, the police overtime, I think, maybe it's probably a question for Chief Burke. But my, my, my concern is, so you know, overtime, it, it's, it's a, it's a stress on the, on the staff. I mean, at, at some point, you can't do too much overtime because you're, you're starting to hit morality, you're starting to hit, you know, fatigue. And for public safety, especially in police, I mean, it's one thing for, and to overtime for, you know, accounting, no, no, no offense. But to pay overtime for, you know, a, a police officer who's, you know.
Yep, most of that overtime, the overwhelming majority isn't the kind that you're talking about. It's to cover vacations and sick and it's voluntarily signed up for. It's almost unheard of for us to actually order someone to work overtime, it's all voluntary. And we don't, you know, we've, we generate routine reports to look at the amount of overtime being worked. And it's fairly evenly distributed within the department. You don't see somebody working such a, a high amount and it's always voluntary. We're able to fill it with people who want to work the actual overtime.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. And then my second question is about the community services. What happens if that, that, you said that this community services project is, is on hold? What happens, what's the impact on the budget if that moves forward?
You know what, I'm actually going to bring up, um, the community services director, Mark Thiemick, to speak about his own budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So the, the project that's proposed to be essentially put on the table is the synthetic turf project at the community center. That was approved as part of the last budget, so you were part of that conversation at the time, I believe. Basically, there were two different funding, there were three different funding sources that came into play in that. One was the Sadio Hills development project, which transferred money from that development because the amenities would move from Sadio Hills. The second was an open space grant that we had hoped to receive, but because of some interpretation of the rules, they deemed our project not valid, although I argued against that because there were other sections that it applied to. And then there was this fund balance piece that would transfer from the community services fund into the capital fund. So essentially it moves most of that money back into, into the community services fund. So essentially, it moves most of that money back into, into the community services fund so it can be utilized. The project would be reconsidered as part of the next CIP, and we'd have to look at funding strategies because there's a pretty big gap there right now. So it doesn't, basically, it tables the project until we can figure out the funding piece of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone here that has any questions or comments on the budget update?
Tim, welcome. It's the trifecta for me tonight, Sean. Okay, so just four questions. In general, I'd be interested in knowing what kind of keeps the assistant city manager up at night when she looks at this, this budget and the review and planning for next year and so forth, other than the change in the discount rate on the pension level? I wasn't able to really discern what the total expenditure is for all, all legal fees and services rolled up into one, you know, including settlement agreements, court fees, billing rates, things like that. I don't know if that's a number that's possible to, to hear. I'd be interested in knowing what the survey is gonna be entailing, covering the line item that's moving the 40 or so K into the city manager's budget. And also, on the overtime for the police, how does that impact the pension calculation whenever that is time to occur for the individual?
Thank you. Can you answer those? Yeah, is there anybody else, anybody else? Mel? No? Okay, I'll close the public comment.
What keeps me up at night? Wow, that list is long. I know. It, it's probably more the unintended costs of CIP projects and the aging infrastructure. That's, that's why I emphasize those reserve policies, that's why I emphasize the, that cap, those capital replacement funds. It's, it's the infrastructure, it's the aging facilities, it's, that's what keeps me up at night.
If I, if I can, if I can add to that, if I can reaffirm that, besides pensions, I think that is absolutely what draws the most concern. We have 100-year infrastructure with clay pipes still in the ground in some areas, and we recognize some of the challenges, just through the roundabout project, but the infrastructure challenges are, are probably the, one of our biggest concerns. Public safety is also a concern as we continue to deal with tourism and higher expectation of services. My concern is, over the long term, is how are we able to continue to make sure that the, our public safety folks have the resources at which they need? But I think those are the two, not to, I wasn't asked, but I thought I'd add my own two cents to that. Thank you.
I think there was a question about the survey and the details on that one.
There was actually a couple other questions that I'd like to, to answer regarding all legal costs and settlement. I focused here on the general fund, and that legal cost is, there are a couple other funds that there are legal costs associated with, and that's the electric fund, and I think there's some in the wastewater fund. I will let our city attorney answer that question.
Yeah, so usually the way it works is fees and expenses, like costs related to litigation, will run through, at my office, I know we will run the cost through our office, and then we will pay the cost, and we'll build the city. I assume that's how Myers-Navey does it as well. I can't imagine they do it any differently. Settlements, though, are, are different. Settlements are usually paid directly by the city, so settlements are probably the only, I don't know if settlements are reflected in that number. Probably not, is my guess.
Is that public knowledge, what a settlement might be for a case that goes on?
It is.
How does the public access that? Ask, and research is done.
Yeah, I mean, usually you could do, yeah, records request for the settlement agreement.
Yeah, public records requests.
Yeah.
So just to go back to that, if the community has a concern about litigation, that's when we have closed sessions, and typically, under closed session, we'll identify what that litigation is, and then the, then the typically, typically, but always, the mayor will then report out what direction was given, and typically, I'll look at the city attorney, if a settlement was directed or whatever that was, that will be reported out at that point of time, and if council, the community wants additional information, they can always come to the city and ask for that. Is that?
That is correct.
And I was actually thinking, I don't believe that the city paid any settlements in the last year. So, yeah, just attorney fees, and that number can be calculated.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't know their attorney, the, the, the other side of the table issue. We would know their attorney's fees, we just know what ours are. If you're asking, if you're asking what the...
Who's a case, we pay their attorney fees.
We haven't lost any cases.
That's, okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Thank you very much.
Settlements haven't been paid. And then, the overtime paid is calculated into the rate that is paid on CalPERS, so we have to pay the CalPERS on that overtime rate.
And then the, the survey was something we wouldn't want to do for some time, but the citizen survey, the results of the city's citizen survey, along with our other efforts such as the livability work sessions, will better inform the city how to improve city services and address community-wide issues in Heelsburg, such as this being a vital place to live and work, and I know tourism and hospitality continues to be a focal point, so we'll be able to address that through, through the survey as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have another question. So one of the things that I think is important when we look at spending, and I know that it's challenging, and I just have to trust, I mean, it just keeps coming up for me, I gotta trust, I gotta trust, because I don't have my head around it like you do, I'm not doing this all day. But let me ask you this, is there any reward or any kind of incentivization for your department heads, or even for you to see, like, a cost savings? Say, for example, you say to the department, this is your budget, and they don't spend their money, instead of seeing, like, gotta spend it, like in education, we just go spend it, spend it, we get so little, spend it all. Is there any way that we, as a management, could kind of see, like, don't spend it all, and then you get rewarded in another way or something?
So, so I think, I'll, I'll, I'll point, I'll actually call out our utility director, Mr. Crowley, who has been very aggressive in that, in that, in that as well. I mean, there's not, there's not a, there's not a incentive to do that, other than it's our job to make, to make sure we're looking out for the public benefit. If you take a look at what Terry's approach has been with water rates, sewer rates, taking a look at how we're, how we've changed our approach to recycle water, making, making sure our ratepayers have, are basically saved as best they can, those are the types of things that we, as a department, we strive to do in all, in all areas. So I think, you know, when you take a look at Mr. Crowley's been able to do, that's a good example of being able to do just what you're saying, is how can we save our ratepayers, you know, money, obviously, but also be able to continue to do, be very aggressive with some of these capital projects, and I think what Terry's been able to do is a really good example of that.
Any few questions?
Couple comments and questions. I, I like that the revenues are good, but, you know, just in general, you know, we do need to keep an eye toward the leaner years. Just in reaction to what's happened with the fires, we can see how quickly things can turn, so. From the, the development-related permits, your general projection for maybe the next year or two, do you have any idea? Because I know we have a couple of huge projects, but once we're built out, those are kind of gone. So just in terms of what you see on the horizon, I'd like to get your feedback on that.
So we have really three significant projects on the horizon, which will take us out many years. One being Sajjo Hills, and I think we'll have resolution on that here within the next month or so. We have Replay, which that continues to go through the process, and we have RJW, and those are the ones that we know about, those are the ones, and all likelihood, something will be moving forward, and those are significant development projects. When you take a look at space in Heelsburg, we don't have a lot of available open land, except when you start looking at south of the bridge, and that will probably be the next phase, and that'll be a planning issue. You know, you're talking about an area plan, you're talking about infrastructure improvements and things like that. So I think if you take a look at kind of the macro level of what's happening in Heelsburg over the next several years, you can foresee an ongoing development. That's not just private development, that's also infrastructure improvements and things like that. As far as the timeline goes, it's hard to say, because each development project takes on a life of its own. Who'd have thought? Maybe some would have. In 2006, is it 2006? It's 2017, and we're still talking about Sajjo Hills. Right? And so it's hard to say how long those projects will actually take to come to fruition, or if they ever actually happen at all. But I think that's kind of how we look at, when we look at long-term plan, we're looking at as those projects are coming along. Then you have the smaller projects that, that pop up, such as, you know, you have Mr. Heaton's project, which I think council will be looking at here in the near future with the project over by Chiquita, and things like that, which can continue to trickle in. The biggest issue, frankly, is the economy, and as the economy continues to move forward, that means there's funding available for all these, whatever these projects may be, and that's what you saw back in 2009, as we're asking for this position, things were humming along, the, the activity was very robust, and then the recession hits in 2009, 2010, and everything stops. The lending stops, the money stops, which really is what drives, telling, I'm speaking to the expert, I know. But I think those are some of the things which we look at. But if you take a look at just what the projects which we have on the horizon, there's some significant projects, we're looking out probably five, 10 years from that perspective. And I think when, when we look at the, the planning and building revenues, really the building revenues, it's more of what's happening tomorrow, because those are the projects which are coming through the front door, you know, that, that my and her team are looking at. But what's significant to me is if you take a look at what the planning or the building revenue is to date through, through October, and we're at 50%, I want to say, that's a, that's a big number, because you typically see a lot of those revenues, the billing activity coming in in the spring. And if we're already at that point now, then there's, I would foresee some, just logically, you're gonna see some additional impacts here in the spring and summer.
Couple others, so I'd ask this question, but I just want to confirm it, things that keep you up at night? So, when, you know, a lot of grants, intergovernmental grants and reimbursements. For me, anytime you're asking for a handout, so to speak, or grant request, I always get nervous that at some point that could burn out. Do, do you have any concerns related to?
No. Our general fund, I mean, if you really look at the percentage of, of that line to, to our overall expenditures, or, excuse me, our overall revenues, it, it's small. So, we've got the, we've got the very, very stable cops grant that comes in a little over 100,000 every year, and every once in a while, we get that, that exhaust fan, or that exhaust, that exhaust grant, right? But we're not gonna spend the expenditures unless we get the grant, right? And it's a really nice-to-have, but that, that, that bread and butter, that's, that's not our bread and butter. That bread and butter is higher up on that list, that sales tax, that TOT, that property tax. That's, that's the stuff that, you know, is gonna keep me awake at night, is, is watching that. Those are the revenues that I watch very, very closely. You can ask me about the details of the other lines, like your finds and collections. It's, it's so small in the overall big picture, I'm not, I'm not digging down into that depth. But I'll tell you something, I'm watching, I've got spreadsheets for property tax, I've got spreadsheets for TOT, I've got spreadsheets for sales tax. I know when that, those numbers come in, and I watch them very closely. So, the intergovernmental grants, that's, that's not, that's not keeping me awake at night.
Okay, and I do want to just reiterate, I'm on the same page with the infrastructure. I know it's one of the things here under drainage projects, or no, wastewater projects, university street main replacement, evaluating options. To me, those are the kind of things that really what we're here for, to get that stuff done right, have the streets done perfectly for the long term, as opposed to the, you know, some of the patching that we did last, last year, that, you know, says we kind of transition away from bigger projects that are, I, I am excited to start looking at, what can we do to finally fix some of this aging infrastructure?
And as we go through the budget process in the, in the spring, in the CIP project, my goal is to get council out in the field and be able to show you some of these challenges, which our public works folks, or electric utility folks, and wastewater folks are dealing with on a daily basis. I like to use the example, there's no natural spring on Powell Avenue, and I drive it to and for work every day, but I guarantee you, almost once a month, you're gonna see a water leak somewhere on Powell Avenue, and that's because we have an aging, moving, shifting water line. Again, it's not a naturally reoccurring water spring there, it's because we continue to have breaks and leaks somewhere along the line on Powell, and that's just a small indication of things that are happening in other parts of the city.
Thank you. Just one more question about, so you, you got me excited when you said you have spreadsheets about sales tax revenue.
I have a lot of spreadsheets. Sales tax I have going back to 2009 at least.
So I'd be really curious to see, like, what, what's, you know, where, what's our crystal ball for sales tax going forward, and what, how do you, what trends are we looking at, and what, at what point can we have a conversation about that?
Well, I, I can tell you, and, I mean, I'd always love to bring in HDL as well, and they're welcome to come in and give you a presentation as well. But what, what I see is, we, we've been seeing, you know, increases, you know, since the recession recovery, we've been seeing increases fairly steep in our sales tax. What I'm gonna, what, what I can envision, just based on, on what I'm getting from HDL, I have no crystal ball, though I would love to have one, just, just slower increases. That's, it's still, still increasing, just, just at a slower pace. It's gonna, that increase is gonna, gonna slow down a little bit, but, but we're gonna still see some slight increases, but we are gonna see some slowdowns in that increase.
Do you want me to tell you any questions?
I just have a question for city managers, since we're talking about things at night that keep you awake. From a managing perspective, how would you respond to the following statement? Heelsburg has to continue to grow in order to maintain itself. In other words, are you in line with the concept, and I hear this from people, that we have to keep building things and growing in order to maintain what we have? Because there was a philosophical question in our last meeting about growth, uncontrolled growth, but as we grow, are we do, are we, in your, from your perspective, do you think about that? Like, I gotta keep the development going because I have to keep the, these funds going? I mean, do you see that, or do you feel like we have to grow philosophically in order for us to maintain our infrastructure?
So I think we have a statute, regulatory obligation, when we receive a application for whatever it may be, to, to process that application in a period of time. And so I think there's, there's a dismisnomer in the community that the city's always trying to grow, the city's always trying to expand and get bigger and bigger, we want more hotels, we want more this, we want more that. We have to process whatever comes through the front door, similar to the, the gun store we had here earlier today. That's allowed by right. We don't have anything in our code which prohibits that use. So we took a look at that challenge, and we came to council and said this is what we wanted to do. Using that same example is, when, when a development project comes in, whatever comes in, we have to process that project. So it's not that we're pro-growth or anti-growth, we're pro customer service, and we're pro providing whoever walks in the door, the ability to process that application regardless of how small or big it is. With regards to growth goes, if you just look at growth on the macro level, I think the challenges the city has is we're a relatively small city, right? We have a small footprint, 12,000 residents, I think 135 full-time employees, plus or minus, and about three, 225 full-time and, and part-time. You know, and you take a look at the influx we're seeing on the weekends, and really, there is no, weekends really start on Thursday now, that has an impact to our public safety folks, it has an impact to our, to our, our infrastructure and to everybody in between. So I, I'm not trying to dodge the question, but I, I think those are the bigger concerns we have. We can't, I don't, I don't think we have the ability to, to circle the wagon and say, nobody else can come in here, and we have to do is, from the city's perspective, we have to manage what the decision-makers, what the direction you give me and our staff to implement. I think that's where the challenge becomes, is, is because as much as we want to be responsive and, and provide the right resources to the community, growth does impact that, both in a positive way and a negative way. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it as being pro or, or opposed to growth. I think from the city's perspective, we have to process whatever comes through the door, but at the same time, as we continue to see more people coming to Heelsburg, it creates other challenges and impacts on our infrastructure and on our staffing. So I, I'm not sure I answered the question appropriately.
I just want to thank you for this nice budget update. I think it was very informative for all of us, and I would gladly
Yes. I would offer a resolution of the city council, the city of Heelsburg amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget. And I think we want a separate resolution for the other one, right? Okay.
Second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Kelsar Magoel?
Yes.
Kelsar Moehigle?
Yes.
Kelsar Moneokas?
Yes.
Vashma Manzel?
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
I'd like to offer a resolution of the city council of the city of Heelsburg rescinding resolution number 382017 and reestablishing the list of authorized positions.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote?
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hegley?
Yes.
Councilmember Neokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
The resolutions pass, and we're on to the next item. Thank you. So now we're talking about appointments of council members to various boards and commissions for 2018. This is always fun.
Nope, we haven't. We missed one.
Darn it. Update on the vacancies in the Parks and Recreation Senior Citizen Advisory and Transportation Advisory Commissions.
Maria Curia, City Clerk, and before you, some update on the recruitment to fill the positions you just mentioned. Staff's recommendation is to receive the update and by motion, appoint council subcommittees to interview the applicants for Parks and Recreation, Transportation Advisory, and Senior Citizens Advisory Commissions. Just a little bit of update on what's been going on to recruit for those positions. The positions were advertised in the Heelsburg Tribune, the homepage of the city's website, and on social media, which included Facebook, Nextdoor, and BIT.ly, I have no idea what that is, but our new communications coordinator does. And as well, an email was sent to all the city's website subscribers. Just I'd like to note that there's two vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Commission, three on the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, and one on the Transportation Advisory. But by the deadline of December 8th, eight new applications were received for the Parks and Recreation, three for the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, and two for the Transportation Advisory. On the Parks and Recreation Commission, there are, the two incumbents were interested in being reappointed, so they submitted their letters of interest. For the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, two of the incumbents are interested in being reappointment. And the incumbent on TAC, the Transportation Advisory, is not seeking reappointment. Again, staff recommends that council forms subcommittees to interview the applicants. And I'd like to note that since the appointments won't be made by the expiration of the terms of January 1st, the current commissions will continue to serve on those positions until their, their successor is appointed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Clerk, have we ever in the city's history paid anybody to be on a commission or at least give them a data plan or ask of, give them anything? And I don't mean big bucks, but just some kind of compensation for being on these commissions or even giving them like some way to, I just wondered about that. And may, may not seem congruent to this conversation, but I feel that's an issue for our city when we ask people to step up. And I just wondered, just as a question before we appointed-
They've always been voluntary positions.
Okay.
So who would like to interview for the Parks and Rec?
I would.
All right. Who would like to interview for Senior Advisory Commission? Okay. And who, what about transportation?
I'll do that, I'll do that too.
Okay.
So can you, so for the senior citizens, that'd be Mayor McCaffrey and?
Public comment?
Okay, yeah, before we take any votes, I'll open up the public comment. Is anybody here? Has any questions or comments on this? Ray? No? Okay, I'll close the public comment. So that was Vice Mayor Hegley and Mayor Mansell for Parks and Rec. Councilmembers McCaffrey and Neokas for Senior Citizens Advisory. And councilmembers Gold and Neokas for Transportation Advisory.
So is that a motion?
So moved.
And there's second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we'll move on to item E. Boards and commissions.
So Mayor, if I may be so bold, I would suggest that we just simply go down the list on who's on the current board and see if there's any changes to that, if we just go down one by one, is that okay?
That's exactly what I was going to do, thank you. Yeah. So library advisor, I'd like to stay on that if that's okay with everybody? Yeah? Senior advisory, oh, good. Economics Development Steering Committee. Still good with that? Okay. NCPA? You still cooking on that one? All right, Joe, you're okay with the alternate? All right. The TAC, Tank Committee, that, that kind of goes around, that kind of goes with, Remif, is that? I'll, I'll keep doing it, I mean, but I haven't really-
Yeah, I mean, so staff typically handles most of that, but I think their, if council would like to participate in those meetings, they're typically up in Ukiah.
Sometimes Fort Bragg.
Sometimes Fort Bragg, sometimes, but usually, usually Ukiah, it's in between.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Do any of these boards pay money for their meeting time?
Yes.
Which ones?
Mosquito and Vector Control District.
That's it? Just one? Okay.
NCLA doesn't.
Oh, but the places you go.
Yeah, Eureka.
So back to-
So back to Remif, I'll, I'll continue on that. Mayors and councilmembers, City Selection Committee, that would be Mayor Mansell.
Oh, really?
Always the mayor, yep. ABAG?
Yes. And I have a question about that. I understand that it's, it's combining with Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC. When is that going to happen? Anybody know?
You have to talk to Jake McKenzie about that one. You got it?
All right, later.
Okay, SCTA?
I would love to stay on that. I would love to stay with that for another year, please.
Great. Chamber of Commerce Board?
I was just going to say likewise, it's alternate.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Chamber of Commerce Board?
I'm happy to stay on.
Okay. Sounds good. And this kind of brings up another one, there's the one that wasn't here is the HTID Oversight Board.
Right.
So is, who's, who'd be interested in that?
I would.
Yeah? You guys, you want to draw straws or?
Okay.
Yeah? So councilmember Gold? Okay, so that will have to bring that back at the next meeting for ratification or whatever. And I just said that because it was quasi-related to the chamber. Anyway, Ree Sparks, volunteer, that'll be Mayor Mansell. League of Cities General Assembly.
Yep, willing to stick with it.
Okay.
Going to the meeting in January?
I'll be up there for NCPA though, same time.
Yeah, me too.
Mayors and councilmembers, Ledge Committee?
I'm, yep.
You're okay?
Willing to stick on it.
You're okay as alternate? Transportation liaison?
Yep.
Yep. Elf Action. That's real gold, you, cool with that? Okay. Joe, you're still?
That I would be willing to give up, give up the alternate if somebody else would like to take it.
Okay, who'd like to take that one?
I'm happy to take it as long as you don't skip out to Hawaii like someone else.
So I'm sorry, who's just-
Yeah, okay, I'm fine with alternate.
So who, so councilmember Gold is the rep and the alternate is?
Joe, hasn't changed.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take the mosquito and vector control district, it's not just because, you know, it's not just because it's paid.
Come on, tell me.
How much do you get paid for that?
You get a hundred dollars a month. There's usually about three, three meetings, and they're in Katati at seven o'clock. Yeah, the cabaret, it doesn't exist anymore.
Did we cover Indian and North, North County?
Okay.
You're going to have a different list.
Sonoma County Waste Management Agency.
I would love to go to those meetings, but I don't know if I'm allowed to.
I believe Director Salmy is not present, so he can stay on that one.
So will Mr., our new public works director will be attending those if Mr. Zimmer, if Vice Mayor or Mayor would like to attend those.
Okay, good. There's some good movement on that. High School Scholarship Committee, that will be Mayor Mansell and Vice Mayor Hegley. RRWA, right on, I'll, I'll continue to be the alternate, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution District, you're, you're a founding member.
I know, I love being on the, I love doing it, but you know, I'll do it, but maybe I can keep the alternate.
Okay.
You want me to step forward as the regular, you'll be alternate? You just said, I gotta let, I gotta let something go. It's a real amazing board.
Sure, I'll take it.
Okay, thank you. And then the last one here, the Oversight Board of the Redevelopment Successor Agency, there's, you know, there's always been a council member on that one. And seeing as Gary is no longer on the council, I'd, I'd love to take that one.
I was going to, I was going to make that motion.
Yeah, well, I think we can wrap this all up into one, right? So at this point, before we make any motions or anything, any public comments? Seeing none? Well, I, I move that we appoint, accept all the lists that we've been saying and appoint the members to the various boards. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's it. Have a great New Year and a happy holiday, and we'll see you on the flip side. You know, and maybe that's something we can talk about with-